It is 6:30 and I would like to call to order the Manchester Select Board Monday, December 19th meeting. We're being recorded by 1623 Studios and Zoom. Roll call vote of attendance. John Round?
Here.
Brian Solace?
Here.
Kathy Bellata?
Here.
Ann Harrison?
Here.
Becky Jakes is here. Okay, thank you. Quick review of Select Board action items. We had talked about discussing a developed action plan for responding to the MBTA zoning. That was a meeting we just got off of, but we are going to do that the first meeting of January. And then regarding the coastal zoning, we will be talking about that later today. And that brings us up to date on...
A couple of items on the action review.
Yes.
So some of the actions don't have owners or target dates.
Correct.
So I think we all sent in whatever we had and some things didn't have clear owners. I think that would be good to just at least get an owner in there and a target date. And then I think some of the actions are closed. So Debbie, is this available online yet on SharePoint? Remember we talked about that?
No, I'm actually, because I don't really quite understand SharePoint. So we're having a training tomorrow with our IT.
Okay.
That's so we can get it, I can get it in there.
So if there are some actions that are closed, then we can just, we'll just have to let you know in the meantime.
Yeah.
And I just think it'd be good to get an owner for the other ones.
Okay, so the first one is the update on the Harbor Master Plan. Is that what you mean?
Excuse me, ma'am chair. Are you, have you opened the meeting?
I have, I've not gotten to, I haven't gotten to public comments yet.
I see. Sorry. Proceed.
Thank you. Okay. Kathy?
Yeah, I mean, this was just a collection of some stuff I had recorded. I think the Harbor Advisory Committee has the action to discuss an approach for Harbor Master Plan and get back to us. We should at least put a target date in there and assign someone to make sure that that happens, right?
All right, I should probably be owner of that since I am liaison to Harbor Advisory Committee. As far as the status on that, I need to get back to people because they did have, we had a Harvard, there was a Harvard Advisory Committee meeting and I did take some notes on that.
But I think even if we just get the owners established tonight?
Yep.
And then that way they can clean up the action that's there and I can...
Okay, so I'll take that one. Brian, weren't you going to be doing the human rights inclusion? Didn't you talk to...
Yeah, that was, you postponed that. She had a sick child.
Okay.
And we're gonna sit down after the holidays.
Okay, so we will...
It's in person, I mean, I'm not prepared to give back to me the time of the worst we have.
Well, I think, I think there were two things. You were gonna get with, was it Hope or...
No.
Well, Hope is the one that made the request.
Hope has made the request on the actual board.
Committee.
I was gonna meet with another private citizen and I believe that name has escaped me.
So I think the action though here is, what we told Hope was after we review our governance work that we're doing with Susan Beckman, we'll get back to you.
Right, which we've not done yet.
Right, and we haven't, just, it's on the list so we don't forget about what Hope requested and we can get back to her, so...
It'd be nice to give her an update.
Yeah.
Brian, would you be able to reach out to Hope?
Yeah, I consider just basically that we're just, it's not, it's still on our radar, just, it was Lindsey Banks who I was gonna meet.
Lindsey, yeah.
Excellent.
But she's, she's not involved in the request for the committee.
No, she's not involved, she spoke at the meeting.
Right, but if you could just let Hope know?
Sure.
That, that we have not completed the governance...
Work yet and it's on our list so we don't forget about her and...
Okay, so you can get that done. Next up, we have climate, climate resiliency, CZM.
So that'll be me to get to some of the other reports.
Okay. Next, review options for rebuilding the rotunda. I think that's, that's really DPW, right?
Yeah, so that one's not due until March?
Right.
So I think Debbie, so what we might consider is when, for presentation purposes at this meeting, it's probably good to sort it by the target date. That way we only talk about the things that are near term and the other things we'll gradually move to the top of the list.
Good idea. I don't, we just did the quarterly, so that does not...
But you have a new one coming up.
It's January 16th is the date for that.
17th will be the meeting, not the 16th.
Yep.
Seventeenth, okay, yeah.
Okay, so we'll...
Seventeenth, yeah.
Okay. Next is Water Resource Protection Task Force.
Yeah, and that can be anytime in January, I think, be ready to chat about that whenever it fits in with an agenda.
Okay, excellent. And then last is ambulance, and I think that that one we did.
We did.
So, okay.
I don't know that we closed it. I thought we wanted you for more information.
We, it's, it's not closed.
Right.
We're going to the next, we've got a joint meeting, is it that first Thursday?
Chief was gonna chase some numbers.
Yeah.
So we can just change the date on this one? It's actively banned work. I think that'd be good. I just, a quick question for Debbie. There's another column added here, future meeting. Is that there beforehand or...
This was, I, I made up a sheet and then I gave it to Sue Beckman and then she added the future meeting date, so...
Okay, because that could be a way of tracking which meeting we put it on?
Yeah.
If you need another column, okay.
Because our next meeting is January 12th with FINCOM.
FINCOM's the 12th.
The joint one. Yeah, so that'll be the next time we would talk about the ambulance. So it's January 12th. All right. Okay, thank you. All right, now, I would like to take any public comments on items not on the agenda and state your name and your address, please, and limit it to two minutes, please. Sheila Pigeon Hill?
Sheila Hill, Two Minute Retro. Ma'am Chair, at the November 21st Select Board meeting, when you were reviewing, kind of debriefing the special town meeting, you made the comment that the information in the Manchester matters flyers was inaccurate. And subsequent to that, I asked you on November 30th to please give me the specifics of the inaccuracies you were hearing.
I said I would get back to you. Yep.
Yes, you, you said on December 1st, I will get back to you in depth. And actually, let me finish my comment. I asked you to give me the specifics of the inaccuracies because I think to make a public statement like that, it impugns the integrity of the information and that needs to be cleared up with resonance. So on December 1st, you said I will get back to you in depth. It is now nearly three weeks later, I've not received a response and I would like to have a public retraction of your statement.
Are you all, are you finished? Sheila, are you all set?
I stopped speaking, yes.
You did state in the letter that you noted, "We actually worked hard to ensure the wording on the flyers offered voters the half of the bylaw story that hadn't been provided by the planning board. In other words, we addressed the potential impact of the changes on neighborhoods and property values beyond the new wording." I, I just would like to say that there are many people who've been working very hard and frankly, for a lot longer. I will get back to you. This is my volunteer job. I have a paid job at which I must work. So I will get back to you. It will not be till after the holidays, but you will get the answers. You will get them bullet point by point by point to note the inaccuracies.
Well, I think that the delay is inappropriate. I think by now, if you had such a clear notion of the inaccuracies, you could have stated them and sent them to me.
And that's your opinion. You're welcome to your opinion, Sheila. Very, absolutely.
I know that, Becky, I know that. Thank you.
I will get back to you after the holidays. Any other comments from the public? Sheila, go ahead and put your hand down. Thank you.
I will put my hand down, Becky. You don't need to be reminded of that. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along, we have up Allison Anholt White from Sustainability.
Is there a German going to do John first?
Okay, nope, but thank you. And interview with John Croft.
Are you gonna interview John first? So...
Yes, please.
Move up a little. Hi, get a little closer.
Not as many seats as last time I was here.
Okay, we received your information. Thank you very much for jumping into the ring. We'll go around and have board members ask questions if they have any. John Round?
Sure. Yes, John, and thanks for raising your hand, as we all have done, to fill in your, your empty time. I'm sure there's not much of that, but we don't have it, but we find it. So I'm just curious, why sustainability? I mean, I saw a little bit of one liner in your background. I guess you've got some financial interest there. Is this personal, professional, combination?
I think both, and I think this is one of the areas that's kind of growing and expanding and pretty new and different. So it seems all worth seeing, but maybe it's one of the things that the town, town's been doing for a long time and they're pretty good at. So this is one that can probably grow and change over the coming years, so that seems pretty interesting.
Not to say that we don't need financial expertise on my committee. I'm very happy to have it.
Good.
I've been, I mean, I've known John for a while now and I think his resume and the work he's done in town speaks for itself, so I'm good.
Thank you, Kathy.
Just a couple of questions, honey. I walk across the street from your house like four times a day. Do you see one with a small German shepherd? That's me. So how do you, how would you expect to leverage your financial background for the committee? It is an asset to have someone from a financial background on any of our committees, so...
Certainly any financial impact to the town are important. The budget process is well-liked, it's always a tight budget, so anything that impacts a town budget is important. I think some of the things we're talking about are pretty significant in terms of potential dollar costs, so you guys have wrestled with some big capital expenditures over the years and you'll be looking at more in the future, so to extend and get ahead of that, figure out what that might look like, that'd be helpful.
I do too. Thank you.
Can you give us an example of the things that might be expensive?
The sewer plant, maybe expensive, moving that, do that.
Okay. I hadn't really seen that as being in the sustainability.
Well, if you consider, you know, how are we gonna get through the next 50, 100 years? One of the issues is gonna be rising sea levels, potentially increased storm. So if we decided that that plant was in a vulnerable spot and needed to move it or maybe connect with other sewer system.
Part of it.
Yeah, or connect, because I had a long time ago, it was connecting with other sewer systems. But any, any of those things would be pretty expensive.
Lotter has the problem with Dave here. His is in worse shape than ours.
Right, so...
We are trying to broaden our mission to include more issues like carbon footprint and, you know, sustainably there with the town as a whole, as opposed to some of the more smaller items. I don't think that's a good...
Thank you.
Hi, John, thank you. When you look at what the town does in terms of sustainability, and I'm going to take a cue from Eli Bowling here, what have we done right and what are we not doing right in your opinion?
Well, I've only seen a couple of minutes and a couple of notes on what's sustainability the committee's been doing so far. It looks like they've done a great job to me.
I'm gonna jump in, I'm sorry. When I say what are we doing right, what are we not doing, it's, it's not a, something that would be a fault of the Sustainability Committee because I do, they are working hard. I mean more, where could we as a community do more in terms of...
Well, one issue is that you kind of have a lot of communities touching on this, various parts of this issue, and so I think coordination is one thing that we could work on. And then secondly, I think we need to make sure it'll be good, at least all the big aspects of sustainability, kind of at least thinking about them. You know, these guys have worked hard on composting and the waste stream and all that stuff's very important, but I'm sure there's some other stuff we're missing and we, we need to get a handle on that sooner rather than later.
Okay. Any more questions from the board?
I moved that we, nominee?
A point?
A point, a point. John Croft, he was a standard...
What is the term? Is this a three-year term, Allison?
Sorry, yes, it is a three-year term, yeah.
And is this finishing another term or starting anew?
For me or for...
For him, for John.
For him. I think it would be starting a new one.
Okay, so, starting a new term now in 2022, so it would actually be two and a half years because they go...
Yeah.
Okay, so through friendly amendment until 2025.
June of 2025.
2025, yeah. All right. Moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solace. Roll call vote, John Harrison?
No.
I mean, John, I keep doing this, you're dad. It's not your dad.
Well, that's...
John Round.
It could be a tooper. I'm the John, she's the Harrison.
It could be. Okay, Brian Solace?
My head's spinning. Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Thank you.
Becky Jakes says yes. Thank you, John, so...
Thank you. Call the answer. Round it up.
I could do that, I might do that. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Now we get the update from Allison.
Just on that, I want to thank you all for, and John, for stepping up because really what the committee is able to do depends on having the members and there've been times when we can't even make a quorum because we've just had people come and go. It's been a very strong turner, so I think this is gonna make a big difference. And John has already made some great suggestions for things that we need to work on, so...
And I can say that John is a very reliable and thoughtful member of the Finance Committee, when we intersected there, so you've got a gap.
Oh, I know, I know it already. And there is a lot about the money that I would love to manage, so... So this is really just a sort of session where I wanna just bounce ideas off you. It's not that we're proposing things very specifically at this stage, but I did send out the draft bylaw that we compiled, I hope you'll have a chance to read it, and also the one that Hamilton, the town of Hamilton compiled, which amazingly, they've been doing, they've been doing that for several years and apparently it's successful. And they have a different system than we do with their composting and trash collection. But at the same time, we have free composting pickup from Black Earth, as you know, so I feel like this is an opportunity where we need to say to the townspeople that, you know, everybody feels overwhelmed by the environment in general. It's like, what can I do? We see all these horrendous statistics from, you know, whatever media you happen to follow that say, you know, we're all going to hell in a handbasket, basically, but there are actually, I want people to understand that there are things that they really can do individually based on what we're already doing very effectively. And I talk with the people at Black Earth quite a bit, and we can make a big difference if we all decide not to put food scraps in the trash. There are so many reasons not to do that and they're all outlined in this bylaw, and that was how Hamilton persuaded their townspeople to have a mandatory organic ban in trash. It, you know, it makes a difference in terms of the cost of our trash collection and the environment and, you know, it's a small thing to do, but it makes, has a big impact. So right now, only 850 households participate in our free pickup out of 2,180 households in the town, approximately. Now, I know, I understand fully that not everybody can or chooses to compost. I think a lot of people don't understand what we mean by composting because they all say, oh, well, I have a big backyard, so I put my grass clippings and my brush. We're not talking about that. We're talking specifically about food scraps, which you do not want to put in your yard because animals will get them and cause a nuisance, so, and we have all the equipment that you need to do that. We have countertop bins, if somebody doesn't have one, we have them free from the Rotary Club, they've provided them, they've given us money to provide them. Everybody has a green bin, if they don't, they can go to DPW and get one. So to me, it's a no-brainer and that was exactly how Hamilton, the townspeople at Hamilton made it happen, was just by saying, everybody should be doing this. There's no actual argument. And in a few years' time, it will be, the Mass DEP will be making it compulsory to do that. So it shouldn't really be optional, it should be something that we continually work towards. And I know it won't happen, certainly not in the coming year, but maybe the following year. So we drew up the bylaw just as a, you know, a starting point to explain, you know, given that we have this free system, how it could work. So, you know, we wouldn't do something like the, what Hamilton does, which is if you don't put out your compost bin, they won't take your trash bin. We're not gonna do that. That would be too strict and it wouldn't work with our particular pickup system. But I just wanted to see what you all think about it. I know some people have expressed doubt, but I think it's something that if we make it simple enough and clear enough for people to follow, very often people don't do something because they're confused by it or they don't know exactly how it applies to them. But if we did a better job of informing and educating, I think we could make it happen. Maybe not to 100%, but maybe to 80 or 90% of the town should be able to compost on a regular basis or just as much as possible. So any suggestions or comments?
My first question is, I don't remember what Hamilton has for sewer and therefore what they're likely, likely to have for garbage finders.
The sewer?
Yeah, you're not supposed to put, you're not supposed to have a garbage disposal if you're on...
Right, no, that's, well, anybody who has a septic can't use a garbage disposal.
Right, but if there are no garbage disposals at Hamilton?
Yeah.
Then that makes their law a little clearer because people on the sewer are likely to just throw their organic waste. Now Greg's notes to us say that's costing the town because it adds to the...
The sewer burden, right?
Yeah, no, it would be a problem if everyone started using the garbage disposal because they don't wanna compost.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And I also think there are things you wouldn't put in the garbage disposal anyway, like bones or compostable capris.
Yeah, when I was on the sewer, yeah, bones go down just fine.
Oh, really?
Yeah, well, not few bones.
It depends on the quantity.
I was gonna say maybe once.
I think the idea is, the idea is to, Black Earth's directions are to expand what can be composted because much more packaging now, I mean, we're trying to work towards compostable recyclable packaging in general, to use less plastic, so, you know, and with this Black Earth system and particularly with the new facility that they're constructing over in Pine Street, we should be able to put a lot more stuff. I mean, we even talked about, you know, cardboard boxes, anything that doesn't have plastic in it.
Right.
And there are some things that are very confusing because they're, you know, combined plastic and paper, but, so the idea is to make a lot of stuff that you wouldn't dream of putting down your garbage disposal, right?
My second thought is if you're finding lots of people don't understand, maybe we need public education more than we need a bylaw right now.
Yeah, I think that's true, and I think that's what we have been doing with all the, you know, activities that we had, like the Waste Era Challenge, the information in the post office, I hope, two or three times a year. We need to do more. Now the committee is...
We need more with, with Cal Hall and getting more stuff on, on the website.
Definitely, definitely.
And, you know, something in the cricket every couple of months.
Yeah.
Pointing out that the collection is free.
Right.
You put it in your bag and you're using up bag space and that's not free?
Yeah, that's right.
Well, and by weight for trash, yep.
Yeah.
And costing the town because the study said it.
And, you know, putting food into the incinerator system, which is where all our trash goes, is ultimately gonna be a major problem, right? Greg, it's gonna create an overload eventually. I mean, so, I think that's a really good point and we would not dream of letting up on the, of not increasing the amount of education that we, you know, have been doing hitherto, so...
Trying to think of other broad, you see a certain number of people at the post office, but...
Yeah, it's...
And are you working with the Green Team?
We have tried to, you mean the high school?
High school, yeah.
I'm working with the middle and the memorial school, both have Green Teams. I've actually done presentations to those kids. The high school, I talked to Mr. Gray a few times, he's really busy. He has a sustainability class now, which he didn't have before, and one of our members is Anna O'Leary, who's on that Green Team, so we're getting to it, but he, I think he must be about to retire because he's been the Green Team leader forever and ever, so...
Well, and the, the state actually has a lot of suggestions and recommendations. If you go online to theirs in terms of what is, how they...
I'm trying to find ways that we could get to people who are not looking to find out about that.
No, I'm saying we can't.
Well, the other thing, Ann, is we have, we've talked about having basically door-to-door visits to people in a way that isn't preachy or objectionable, just informational. We've talked about nuclear thing, I mean, you have, you know, it's like political stuff. You can't be too invasive, but we certainly do want to do that and, you know, going, we now know which households do and don't compost, and we can certainly go to those people and try to understand what's holding them back.
So I have a couple of suggestions. First of all, I'm one of the, I drag my little green bin out there every week and I'm very happy to be a part of the program, but I took the liberty of asking some of my neighbors, why haven't you seen my green bin out there? You even carry it back in for me, you know, sometimes. Why don't you compost?
Yeah.
And these are people who I would have expected to compost because they're very environmentally concerned.
Yeah.
The reason they gave me was the ick factor.
I know.
But, listen here, they actually used to compost. They composted for 10 years when they lived somewhere else and had a big backyard, so they're not unfamiliar. My concern is that the way this program is being promoted turns people off. If, when I looked at the collateral today, I actually went through the website and stuff like that, and it talked about the ick factor, putting scraps on your counter.
Which website are you...
I went to the Black Earth, I went to the, I went to the town website, but when, my point is, it's making it sound messier than it, I think it needs to be, because I do it every week and there's no smell, there's no, you know, there's no mess or anything. So I just, I'm concerned that people are getting unnecessarily turned off because when I talk to my neighbors about how I do it, they're like, oh, well, that's easy. I was like, yeah. So there may be some opportunity there, so that's suggestion one. Suggestion two, you're gonna lose me out of that program if it's not mandatory in about 10 years. That bin is a little heavy for me for the distance I have to walk and so, and it's, the handle is too low, so if I use the wheels, I'm like this, walking a very long time. The bin's not really well designed. The bin's not really well-designed for, we always talk about our aging community here. And that's another reason why one of my other neighbors doesn't use it because if it was more like a airline carry-on, you know, with a bin, the handle was a little higher or there's an extended handle, you could just roll it out easily. It's not easy. So today, I pick it up because I can, and I put it in my recycle bin, and I roll that out. But if, ten years from now, I might not be able to do that. So before we consider a ban, I think there are some, I would recommend a comprehensive change management plan. What you're trying to do is change human behavior. Communication and education is a piece of that. But another piece is not going out to promote, but going out to listen to try and understand why people aren't doing it. And then, once we get some data on why people are hesitant or resistant, then you can develop a resistance plan, you know.
A couple of years ago, we, we put out a survey, you know, and we asked all those questions, and we got some of the responses that you said they were relatively small. The ick factor wasn't a huge factor. I hadn't heard the thing about the bin being awkward. One thing I would say is that it's heavy wherever you put it. The same material is going in your trash, you still have to lift it.
But I have a nice trash barrel with wheels with a handle at an appropriate height, so I don't have to get into an odd ergonomic position.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna step in here now. This is, rather than getting into it back and forth.
We don't want the details. My promotion is like, a comprehensive plan is all I'm suggesting.
I hear, I do hear you, and I think that's a good point. I just, I'd be nervous about investing in, you know, a whole town's worth of new barrels.
Right, but it's, and again, we're not gonna go back, and we don't have time to do that.
No, I understand, okay.
So I think, but it is a good point in terms of our aging population. But I, I think that we are very appreciative of the Sustainability Committee.
No, we want to make it all work, you know.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to make one more point because we compost.
Yep.
This is an older community, whether we believe it or not.
Oh, I know.
And there are a lot of one-person and two-person units.
Yeah.
And we only drag our compost out about once every three weeks. Frankly, we don't have very much.
Yeah, right, sure.
And so I'm not sure how you came up with eight hundred and fifty households. Is that collaborating with Black Earth or something?
Yes, that's what Black.
Dealing with that, they're only getting our container once every two or three weeks.
Sure, that's understood.
In the spring, then garden stuff goes in there, you know. And so there, there are times where it's going in there. But in terms of just food scraps.
Right.
It's, it's a very low number. I do have a banana every morning.
I hear you, but we're also trying to encourage composting things that people don't. And for example, Crosby's now uses compostable meat trays.
Okay, that's, that's an education thing, you know.
Those can go in, yeah.
That's, that's a bigger deal. But I'm just wondering about the metrics. I think you may be getting more people with the eight fifty than.
Well, the eight fifty was like what actually was picked up. He has perhaps a hundred and more that pick up occasionally, like you. I mean, there's, yeah.
Okay, and Allison, I'm very sorry to do this.
Gonna cut me off.
Just if we, yes, and I, if you can.
I won't go back and forth anymore, I apologize.
No, I, I understand that. It's, but, but we do have to.
It's all good input, well, well.
Go ahead.
Are you, am I down to the line now? Okay. So I appreciate what I'm hearing is a lot more education, paying attention to what it is that prevents people, you know, why they would or wouldn't, if they feel they already do as, as much as they can. No, I, I get all that. And the bylaw might not be necessary if we continue to promote and do what we're doing, so. And now we'll be, we'll have more with John Ward, we'll be doing more of it. One other thing, which is.
Start composting.
Massachusetts Department of Environmental Collection has increased or decreased the amount of commercial, it's called Commercial Food Material Disposal Ban. It's now half a ton. And we believe that will probably apply to some of our town businesses, including Crosby's, some of the restaurants. I've actually tried to talk to Chris Crosby, he's not been available lately, to find out if, in fact, it does apply to them. And they had, when I met with them a year ago, they had indicated a willingness to, to compost again. And they haven't recently. Because I think, you know, households, the very small amount, something like Crosby's or the restaurants, a very large amount of food waste. So I don't know if you have any suggestions on how to make that work better, work at all.
I think that if we have.
Chamber of Commerce or something.
Maybe through the chamber.
Oh, okay, yeah. It's only just started in November, so.
But the state, yeah. Once again, the state, though, I think if they, they have guidelines and.
They definitely do it on our website.
Right.
Yeah, okay. I was gonna talk about plastic, but maybe that's for another time.
Time.
I'll write to you.
Sorry.
About plastic. Okay, well, that's very good input. And, yeah, yes, people do what we're doing.
Well, I think, you know, you all are, it's, it's, it's a very difficult task trying to share information with people if they don't use the typical avenues of information.
It really is hard because the community is so fractured. You know, there really isn't, the cricket is, is great, but then a lot of people don't read the cricket. So it's hard to know where to go. But I think if the website, the town website could help, that would be terrific as well, so.
Yeah, and definitely talk to Tiffany because you can always, we can always put things on the website.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much, yes. And John?
Congratulations, John.
Yeah, have fun. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's save the meeting.
The consent agenda. I had a question about the, does anybody want to pull anything out? Okay, my quick question was on, on the Victular's license. I noticed there were a number of facilities, restaurants not on there. Do we know anything about Allen's? I mean, not Al, I mean, Ally's? And Antique Table?
I go to Antique Tables today.
Morning?
Reaching out to them probably tomorrow.
Okay, okay. Any other questions on the consent agenda? May I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Second. Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellotta, roll call vote. Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta?
Yes.
Brian Solacey?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Nikki Jake says yes. Okay, now we have Coastal Zone Management presentation.
All right, so we're kicking off this evening. Some work that's getting underway for some strategies that we can incorporate to be more resilient to coming sea level rise challenges and larger storms in particular, those two threats, as the impacts are the village core area. So this study is focusing on basically from Mascanola Park over to, to Crocker's, that general area of town. And so we're, we teamed up with, with folks from Fussin' O'Neill and also from the Woods Hole Group. And we have with us a number of folks who are on that team. And I think Alex Maxwell will be our lead presenter. And some of the other team members may, may be chiming in. But tonight's purpose is really give an overview of the study and the timeline. It'll be a fairly quick effort. It'll be between now and the end of June. So we have another, you know, six and a half months to work on this. It's been underway for about a month now, collecting data and going over some of the past studies that have been done. So with that brief introduction, I think I'll, I'll turn it over to Alex and have him, Alex, you were able to share a screen there? You should have that capability.
Yeah, thanks, Greg. Appreciate that. All right. So can I just, for those, those viewing from, from Manchester there, can you just give me a thumbs up that you can see this on your side? I know, great. All right, so hello, my name is Alex Maxwell, as Greg mentioned. I'm a resilience planner with the engineering firm Fussin' O'Neill. And I'm also the project manager for the Manchester By the Sea Climate Vulnerability Action Planning Project that I'll briefly introduce tonight. I also want to start things off by mentioning that I'm, I'm joined on the call by several of my colleagues from Fussin' O'Neill. So I think we have Sarah, Sarah Morrison on the line. Sarah, if you just want to wave hello to folks. Sarah's a business line leader with our group and the adaptation technical lead on our project team. I'm also joined by Chelsea Zakkus, who's another environmental planner. Chelsea, if you want to give a wave. And tonight, we're also joined by our team partners from Woods Hole Group, represented by Joe Finley, who's also on the line. So that's just a, a brief look at our, our team here. So to kind of dive into things, as many of you well know, Manchester By the Sea experiences frequent flooding in the downtown and inner harbor area, both from coastal flooding and riverine flooding. And this puts much of the critical infrastructure in this area at risk. So with support this year from the Coastal Resilience Grant Program, which is a program run by the Office of Coastal Zone Management, or CZM, the Coastal Vulnerability Action Plan will provide a roadmap to reduce coastal flood risks and increase coastal resilience. And really building on class, past studies, this plan will develop a phased approach to establishing action-oriented alternatives for both neighborhood scale and site-specific scale mitigation measures to increase resilience in the downtown and inner harbor area. The planning process that we've established for this project starts with an assessment of existing conditions early this winter. As Greg mentioned, we've actually already launched into this part or this phase of the process here, we're about a month in. And this will then feed into an updated vulnerability assessment for the downtown and inner harbor area. After completing that assessment, our team will then begin to develop and analyze alternatives through the spring for both neighborhood and site-scale mitigation measures to reduce coastal flood risk. And key alternatives will then be summarized in a draft recommended plan by early June, and then finalized in the final draft of the Coastal Vulnerability Action Plan by the end of June, following some wider consultation with the local community. It's worth noting, as you can kind of see here on the slide, neighbor left-hand corner, during each phase of the planning process, we will be hosting a public engagement meeting to keep the community apprised of our, our progress on the plan. And really, and importantly, to also solicit additional feedback on key deliverables ranging from the vulnerability assessment to the alternatives analysis, and of course, the draft plan itself. So now I'll just take a moment, about a minute each, just to quickly unpack each of these, these planning phases to kind of detail a little bit more in terms of the tasks involved, and then open it up to any questions. So during this, this first phase of the project, the, the existing conditions assessment, the project team will complete an assessment that will consist of several tasks. Will be compiling mapping from existing sources, such as utility plans and past surveys, as well as record drawings from past construction plans. Will be collecting quantitative data on past flood elevations within the project area. Will then be confirming resource area delineations along the inner harbor edge. And then finally, will also, as part of a, a field investigation, site visit, be collecting critical elevation information at low points, including drainage structures, force floor elevations of, of other structures in, in the project area and other low points along the harbor. In the second, second phase of the project, we'll build upon, as was mentioned before, past studies, but more specifically the two thousand sixteen town-wide vulnerability and risk assessment study. But we'll really be narrowing the focus, as Greg mentioned, to the inner harbor and downtown. As part of this, this phase, we'll be completing an updated vulnerability assessment to assess not only current, but also future flooding and water surface elevations, along with projected habitat change as a result of sea level rise. And additionally, we'll be generating GIS-based inundation maps and figures for the twenty thirty, twenty fifty, and twenty seventy planning horizons. Coupled with this, we'll also complete an asset-specific assessment conducted for the buildings and infrastructure in the study area. And this will really help us prioritize adaptation actions over time and importantly, identify opportunities to address the protection of multiple assets with more efficient site or even neighborhood-scale flood protection strategies. So that takes us to the third phase of the project, which is the alternatives analysis, which we'll get to more in the spring, as you may remember from that brief overview of the timeline. As part of this, this phase, the team will identify potential neighborhood-scale and site-scale alternatives that have the potential to reduce flood risk. These alternatives will be developed to really maximize the potential for both nature-based and hybrid design approaches. And the phasing of these improvements will be proposed to match several future climate risk scenarios. To give kind of a flavor of, of what these alternatives can, can actually look like, at the, at the site scale, alternatives or mitigation measures can really range from a simple implementation of, of protective barriers around assets to the location of, a relocation, rather, of critical building systems and infrastructure, to even elevating structures. And zooming out a little bit more towards the, the neighborhood-scale alternatives, these can range from more nature-based approaches, such as developing things like the living shoreline or constructed wetlands, to habitat, or sorry, hybrid, hybrid approaches like waterfront parks, to of course, more engineered or hardened infrastructure, such as flood walls, bulkheads, and seawalls. And we'll, we'll be looking, it's important to mention again, we'll really be looking for opportunities to incorporate these nature-based approaches and the sort of hybrid approaches which blend nature-based with some of the traditional hardened infrastructure. So following the analysis of alternatives, the project team, as was mentioned earlier, will develop a recommended action plan based on not only the results of the alternatives analysis, but also the results of the vulnerability assessment. And importantly, feedback during our stakeholder and community engagement meetings throughout the project. Public meetings, as was mentioned before as well, will be held at each key phase of the planning process. It's the intent that these would be noticed on the, the project website, which is linked here, and also through other channels, such as the town website and other social media platforms. And it's worth noting that the, the project website, which is live as of today, will also be where the project team provides updates on all the progress made throughout the planning process. And we really, we strongly encourage those that are interested in receiving updates about the project, to hop on the website now. You can submit your email address via the email signup form that we have live on the engagement page. Keep your email information confidential, but it'll be a great way for us to send out email blasts throughout the project to keep folks surprised when there's new, new content on the website, new opportunities for engagement meetings, and those types of activities. So with that, I, I want to just conclude our, our very brief, brief introduction to the project. I want to thank members of the, of the select board here tonight for your time and members of your community for the time. We really look forward to engaging with all of you throughout the course of the project. I've provided my contact information here. Would welcome you to reach out to me at any point if you have, you know, other inputs, feedbacks, comments, questions, concerns. We really look forward to hearing from you. We're really, really excited to be partnered with the town on this project. So with that, Greg, I can kick it back over to you and hit all the, the little boxes back on my screen here and see if, if folks have any initial questions or comments about, about the project.
So just a couple of follow-ups. So we'll have a, a link on our, on our town website to go to the project website that, that Alex just mentioned. So that'll be easy for folks, folks to do. We're looking for volunteers for helping provide input on the process, on the projects and some of the recommendations, putting together a steering committee so that'll get up and running during the course of January. And so if folks are interested in, in being part of that, we would welcome, welcome hearing your, your name. And you could help serve on a steering committee for, for the project. Uh, Nate and Chuck in DPW have been instrumental to date with it. Uh, Sue Croft has been doing, providing some oversight and organization for us as well, uh, and is instrumental in, in getting the grant in the first place. So it's been a good team effort to date, but we wanna expand that as we get more into the materials and look forward to, uh, to engaging in, in a community discussion about what, what some options might be and how, how we can go forward with them.
Have we put anything on the website yet? I didn't see anything.
I don't think we have it up yet.
Okay.
It'll get up in the next day or two.
Excellent.
Greg, who's your lead on this? You mentioned a lot of good names, but who is the lead for the town that will oversee this steering committee or?
Right, so Nate Verosa, yes, yeah.
And then one small request. I think it's an excellent plan. I very much appreciate the, the timeline on slide three. I love timelines telling us what you're gonna do and when you're gonna do it. Outstanding. Um, one small request, uh, most of the presentation called this a coastal vulnerability plan. The title slide said climate vulnerability. And when we're talking about subjects like this that are subject to scope creep, et cetera, you have a very well-defined scope for this project. That's great. Let's make sure our language is very precise. There are a lot of other things related to climate change which have absolutely nothing to do with flooding, you know? So, um, whatever this project is gonna be, uh, sea level rise, flooding, action plan, you know, something very precise that makes it very clear what your well-defined scope is. And that will help us from a governance standpoint. Uh, if you haven't already run this by Susan, who's doing some of our governance work, right up front, I would recommend understanding where this overlaps with other committees, what the responsibilities are of this one, and where other committees may need to stand down on particular topic areas or provide input. Whatever that roles and responsibilities, um, environment looks like, you wanna move fast and, and a great way of doing that is just get all that really clear up front. But it looks like a great plan.
John Round.
Yeah, no, I was, I was just gonna ask, you know, I'm not sure the sustainability committee overlaps with this. Maybe a little bit, depends upon what their mission is, cuz that can go in lots of different, as you say.
I can see overlaps.
It can, if they decide that's a direction they wanna go in, but there's lots of different directions. Are there other committees that, you know, it's like the green team, some of these are?
I was thinking downtown improvement, we wanna say, you know.
So.
There's nothing that's a bullseye on this.
Conservation.
They're all wanna have a say.
Representatives from each of those committees, um, on the steering committee.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I think using the committees is pretty critical here to get the integration into the, into the community.
Right, I, I agree.
Point. Brian?
No, I think that, uh, like you say, harbor ivory, I mean, there's, there's.
There's a ton of committees that are gonna wanna.
And maybe even the, uh, when we get the harbor master plan, uh, grouped together. Uh, and it's all, it's all intertwined.
Anne?
Sounds like a great point, I'd like to be involved.
There you go, you got a name.
You got a name.
Okay, wonderful, thank you. I think, uh, it was interesting to read over what we received.
So we'll certainly keep you updated and there'll be future presentations, not only before you, but also different boards and committees a- as well. So, Alex, thank you for you and your team.
Yes, thank you all very much.
Likewise, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have the coyote awareness discussion. Um, and we've had, um, some reports of coyote activity. And Todd or Hayes, either of you want to, um, talk about what's been reported?
I just found out recently about certain things that were going on in town.
Um, I've got, um, Prospect briefly personally, and he had mentioned that he'd heard about some coyote attacks in town.
And because he had chickens, he was nervous, and I had said I didn't know anything about it. So I called the station and I called Town Hall, uh, for help, and no one had had any complaints about anything, or any just comments about anything. And then, like, three days later, I got a fax about a dog that was attacked by a coyote in the backyard. And then I got another woman who said that she had had incidents with a coyote, um, and a dog. And then another woman who does rapey healing on a dog coming, and she got a puncture wound, assumed it was a coyote, doesn't know exactly, but it was in the same area. So she's just.
Okay, um, and Todd, you had mentioned, um, some other communities, native?
This is on the HUT.
Uh-huh.
So, uh, I was doing a little research on the, the HUT incidents, but I believe those were mostly, um, incidents that involve aggression towards humans. And so far, our, uh, incidents here in town have been, uh, mostly towards dogs. So, uh, it is a, kind of in a triangulated, uh, location here in town to the point where we're just gonna hopefully monitor it and gather some information and see if we need to look at any more adjustments or take any further steps.
What area?
It is, uh, between Proctor, Mascanomo, uh, Beach and Old Neck, up in that section of town. Those were the, most of the complaints is coming from.
So that's as of the fall?
Within the last three weeks.
Just within the last like week and a half, two weeks.
And, and then what, it really has been quiet prior to that? Has been like for a couple of years or?
For sure.
No.
I mean, it, I wouldn't say it's quiet, I mean, there's people saying there's coyote all the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, there's coyotes crossing the crosswalk, uh, the train tracks that are in, you know, seeing a beach sometimes. I mean, they're, they've been around, so.
I've seen them trotting down School Street.
But, but this.
But there hasn't been any aggression towards dogs or people or anything like that or any attacks.
And this, so this is when it comes on our radar and we just need to be aware of it and?
So, so I was thinking maybe some, you know, communication through social media in regards to what to do, what the, what they, uh, report if, if people ever come across some sort of coyote.
And remind people they're not supposed to discharge a gun.
Within five hundred feet of dwelling, that's correct. So, that's kinda where we're at with the coyotes.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Um, questions or comments from the board?
We hope for your input on what to do.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and that's why I refer to the.
If, if seen, you mean, or like if, if you have an interaction or?
If, yeah, if I were walking my dog and saw a coyote coming toward us, what should I do?
Um, so I would make noise and walk towards it. You wanna be the alpha, you don't wanna be the, the prey. That's what they say, you wanna, and if they, and then you stop, and if they motion for you, you motion forward again. But you don't wanna confront a coyote really, you know, I mean, you just wanna really stand, you don't wanna run. Um, they say, so I was gonna, I was gonna suggest maybe that we could have somebody in here at the town to maybe discuss coyotes. Um, I did a coyote forum, uh, a couple of years ago, and it was a really good turnout. I had five towns of, of constituents come and listen to this man talk. Um, I brought his book along, uh, Suburban Coyote, he has three other books that he's written. He's a biologist, he worked in Cape Cod, Boston, um, surrounding areas tracking coyotes. And he has, he has tracked probably thirty coyotes, had collars on them, followed their locations, had them, like, watched them have kits and, um, seen, like, tracked their kits as well. He's got a lot of knowledge and it just helps with education for, for the community.
Absolutely, and if we could have a link, I think, to some of that, to his book and, or, or some, him maybe as opposed to the book, but, but just for questions if we could.
Yeah, there's more information right here, you can visit Hamilton Page, whatever they said, yeah, I can put, I can give that to you guys for sure.
Might be something in the library we need to be having to talk about.
Mm, yeah, I did it at the Hamilton Library last time, a couple of years ago, so maybe the man should.
Yeah, I, I think, I'll bet they would.
Okay, great.
That's a great idea.
I'll talk to him about it.
I'll just say, I do carry an air horn cuz I walk my dog near, um, Powder House, um, when it's dark. And, um, when I went to the sporting goods store this spring to buy it, he said, "Oh, you want a coyote horn?" That's why everybody buys them, it's not gonna take to a Bruins game, right? It's just noise, right? And, um, but the spring, we had a real challenging little fella in, of a powder house. He was coming into the, the neighborhoods and, and the streets and everything, but he went away.
He went away?
Uh, yeah, we, we believe a neighbor's dog was in heat, was not, um, and that was attracting the coyote cuz they apparently can smell it from a mile away. And, and once that situation rectified itself, the coyote went back into the woods. But I've seen him run down Pine Street right by the gas station, I mean, they're all over the place.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got, I got, uh, talked to, today by some woman in, in Gloucester. She was like, "Are you in Gloucester? Are you in Gloucester?" Cuz they're everywhere in Gloucester, and I was like, "Okay." They're everywhere, oh, for sure.
So we had, curling up in the fetal position, crying like a little baby, not suggested.
Not suggested, no.
I don't think that's planned.
Okay, um, well, thank you very much for the information. I think it'd be good to get that, um, out on social media and then see if we might be able to tie something with the library.
Yeah.
I think that'd be great, Hayes.
Over to you, Josh, I'm sure.
Okay. Um, next up, we have the public hearing for the nuisance and dangerous dogs residing at Three Colburn. Let's go back to, yes. Okay, um, so we'd like to have a motion to ho- open the public hearing. Pursue it, um, uh, to determine whether a dog is nuisance or dangerous pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157, or other applicable law.
So.
Second.
Moved by Anne Harrison, seconded Kathy Blatter, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Anna Policy?
Yes.
Kathy Blatter?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. So this is the public hearing based on a complaint made against a dog or dogs residing at Three Colburn Road in Manchester.
So Greg Corville has just joined us, Attorney Corville, so.
Okay.
Greg, you there?
Uh, yes, good evening, uh, through you, Madam Chair, this is Greg Corville, um, Town Council for the Town of Manchester by the Sea, and, um, I'm here to provide, um, assistance to the board in this matter.
Thank you. Okay. So will Greg read the?
So Greg, would you like to, so take, take the gavel from here and, and walk us through the proceedings?
Yes, um, thank you, through you, Madam Chair, sorry, I did just now join. So, um, have you opened the hearing?
So they, that's, that, they just voted to open the hearing.
Excellent, um, so I first, uh, Madam Chair, recommend that you, um, that you, uh, read the, the hearing notice that's posted on, on the, um, board's agenda for the record.
Okay, I thought I read that one.
I'll just read that, that's entirely.
Okay, so this is a notice of public hearing. The Manchester Select Board will be conducting a public hearing based on a complaint made against dog at resident of, residing at Three Colburn Road in Manchester. It will be determined whether the dog or dogs is a nuisance or dangerous dog pursuant to the provisions of General Law, Chapter 140, Sections 157, or other applicable law. This hearing will be conducted in the Manchester Town Hall Room Number Five, located at Ten Central Street, Manchester, Mass. 0944, and by Zoom on December nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, at seven thirty. Zoom information will be available on the town website prior to the meeting.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. And, um, is there, is the dog owner or their representative in attendance, either in person or by Zoom?
Yes.
And, um, would you please have them introduce themselves for the record?
Where's the camera?
It'll, it'll.
It'll pick you up.
Okay, cool, I, um, my name is Alexander Westerhoff, I live on Three Colburn Road in town.
And I'm Mark Rangaza, I'm his attorney.
Greg, is that sufficient?
Yes, um, thank you, Madam Chair, um, and good evening, folks. Um, so the way that, um, the, the hearing will proceed this evening is in, um, three general parts. Um, in part one, um, the board will, will hear evidence and testimony from, um, the town's, um, animal control officer as well as from anyone who wishes to lodge, um, complaints about the dogs. Um, in the second phase, the, um, dog owner will have an opportunity, um, to, to give testimony and evidence, um, in the matter. And then finally, um, the board will enter its deliberations and voting phase, at which time, the board will discuss the matter amongst itself, um, and reach a decision on two issues. First, whether the board, um, whether the dogs are nuisance or dangerous dogs as those terms are defined in statute. Um, and if the answer to that question is yes, then on the question of what, if any, remedy, um, should be issued, um, in order to, um, abate the nuisance or protect the public. Um, so, um, before we begin, um, Madam Chair, through you, I would suggest that, um, you give the, the dog owner or their, their counsel an opportunity to make an opening statement?
Okay, thank you, Greg. Um, Alex or attorney, would you like to make an opening statement?
Uh, we would.
Do we, before you do, Greg, does, do people need to be sworn in at this point?
Uh, Madam Chair, we can either do that now or we can do it after the, um, opening statement when testimony begins.
Okay, thank you. You can just stay right there, the camera will pick you up.
Used to being in a courtroom where you have to be a lot more formal, so this is, uh, if I seem chafed by the informality, please forgive me. Really what we have here is a, an appendage to a civil suit. There is a civil matter pending between Mr. Westerhoff and one of the complainants. So for that reason alone, I think that it might be proper to abate this hearing until that is resolved. However, should you not be interested in doing that, the incident that led to this complaint, I believe, is enumerated in Section 157 where it says if the dog was reacting to another animal or to a person and the dog's reaction was not grossly disproportionate. So not simply something that bothers us, but it must be beyond that kind of super proof level. And that would not be a dangerous dog, that is a dog reacting to an incident. We have another incident here that I saw in the file where there was a complaint by someone at One Colburn Road, which does not seem to be anything that has anything to do with danger, uh, simply a bit of an annoyance. And Mr. Westerhoff will testify, or I can tell you, that, that his testimony will say that the prior residents of that house and he had a very friendly relationship. The dogs would go from one house to the other at all times. At One Colburn Road, his dog was used to getting treats. A new neighbor comes in and then the dog is still, uh, the dog isn't really aware of the, uh, transfer of the property. We tried to explain it to the dog, but they don't understand property law any better than I do. And so to whatever extent there actually has been a problem here that anybody here needs to be concerned about, there has been remediation. Uh, Mr. Westerhoff has installed an electronic fence with shock collars and not only put it, uh, so that keeps the dogs on his property, but he's done it so that he actually has a spare acre, so nobody's gonna get more than an acre close to these animals at any time. So nobody's going to get more than an acre close to these animals at any time. So I would say that.
An acre to the street.
Okay, so there's a there's an acre distance between the fence and the street. So to whatever extent anybody has any concerns, I think that concern has been remediated in a way that doesn't require any further action by the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Greg?
Um, yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I will, um, reserve rebuttal to that until the time of your deliberations, if that's okay with you.
Okay.
And I would like to also.
Um, well, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Next up, um. Is this, uh? Go ahead, Greg.
That's okay, so at this time, Madam Chair, I would suggest that um, anyone who intends to give testimony in the matter, um, stand up to be sworn in.
And this would include anyone on on Zoom as well?
Okay.
Yes, if you're on Zoom, I would ask that, um, yes, you turn on your camera so that we can see you.
So those on Zoom, could you unmute yourselves as well if you wish to testify? On Zoom?
Yes, this is Peter Van Assen from Flywood Home Road.
Okay, Mr. Shaw.
Kind of like to testify.
Mr. Shaw, are you interested in testifying?
Yes.
Okay, um. Mr. Corbo, do you want to swear people in?
Yes, so for everyone who intends to give testimony, would you please raise your right hand? And do you swear that the testimony you were about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, um, so through you, Madam Chair, is the, um, the town's, um, animal control officer, Mr. Demuel, here?
Yes, she is, Hayes Demuel is here.
Okay, thank you, um. And so, um, I would like to ask, um, Mr. Mule if she would recount her, um, report and experiences to the board?
Hello, Board, my name is Hayes Demuel. I'm the animal patrol officer in Manchester. I've been on a job since 2017. My experience with Alex Westerhoff and device Mule started shortly after. So I guess I started dealing with, um, Alex on July 2018, just for a lost dog. Then in May of 2020, there was a dog attack on Colburn, a man and his young children, walking their dog. Then on, excuse me.
Go ahead.
April 2022, there was a lost dog from Colburn. Then uh, May 2022, I issued a citation for overdue registration, as well as a verbal warning for a leash law violation. I met all three of his dogs, which weren't registered at the time. Then Colburn, 1 Colburn threatened to shoot his dog. It's another nuisance call for the dog. That was on July 2022. Then on July 22, 2022, another neighbor called saying that they were at their wits' end with the dog, uh, being off leash and unattended. Then September 2022, um, he called, uh, Mr. Alex Westerhoff, reported his tortoise missing. Just another animal nuisance call. Um, another tortoise called a day later, the tortoise is found. On the 22nd, I took his dogs off quarantine. Wait, 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 wait. I placed the dogs in quarantine for the attack, and then I had to go back and take the dogs off quarantine. That was September 2022. So that was the last, um, incident with, uh, excuse me. With the Burnses, Tamara Burns and William Burns. And that was a pretty significant, um, dog attack. But that was only my history with them. If there's previous history before, I was the animal control officer in town as well. And it goes through two other dog officers as well. And the history actually started in 2005 with do- dog nuisance calls.
And, um, Mr. Demuel?
Yes.
How many, um, complaints of these three particular dogs do you have um, being outside the property and not being leashed?
Twenty.
Over what period of time?
You under oath.
Hold on, hold on.
I'm a lesser.
I would like to object to any testimony that isn't from her personal experience. I I do believe she's swearing under oath to these incidents. So if she has no personal knowledge of it, I don't think it's properly introduced. And if that.
Eighteen for those dogs.
If that objection is not going to be well taken, I would like to object to anything prior to 2011 because these dogs were not born until 2011. So I I don't know how anything prior to that could be remotely relevant.
I I think the relevance comes into, um, how the dogs are being trained and handled.
Respectfully, um, I I would say that that would be outside the purview of the statute. The statute is about the animal itself, not about whether Mr. Westerhoff is in some way a bad person.
I don't think anybody implied that he was a bad person.
So I think what it comes down to actually is the roaming of the dog on the streets, unattended and unleashed, because we don't allow unattended unleashed dogs on the streets. We have a leash law in town.
No one's arguing that. What I'm saying is I don't see how, we have three dogs here that you have sent a notice that says up to and including destruction of these animals. It's about these animals, it's not about other animals. It's about if it's about a nuisance.
They've had three dog bites on them. There's been three dog instances on them. There's been the the dog with the guy with the with the kids, and then.
Yeah, but we're not injuries.
Alex, can you can you can you describe that incident? Was anybody bit?
No, no one was bit.
So it was growling and barking?
No, it was the guy grabbed his and his animal and his dog and his cat and his kids, and they ran, and they got help.
Happened at the same location.
Excuse me.
And it was very scary.
Okay, however, there was there was no contact with the animal.
So originally, I wasn't going to do a dangerous dog hearing. I was going to do a nuisance dog hearing because the dogs are on the streets all the time, and they're getting into people's trash, and they're getting into people's mail. And then the last attack on the Burnses made it pretty evident that they do not, um, adhere to voice command. They shouldn't be allowed on the street because they attacked for the second time, same area.
If that were true, provided that, uh, let's take that as true.
Um, I'm I'm just going to step in here a minute because I would like to hear what our town council has to say, rather than, and nothing is supposed to be going back and forth. Everything is supposed to go through the chair. And no side, no, no, and and one person speak at a time, please. Otherwise, I think it it makes it very difficult for anybody sitting in to hear, as well as for keeping an accurate record.
Okay.
Um, Attorney Corbo, um, I'd like to get your input on.
Yes, thank you, um, through you, Madam Chair. So as to the the two objections that have been raised here, first off, um, you know, with respect to the animal patrol officer's testimony, um, and whether or not it's based on personal knowledge, this is an administrative informal hearing, rules of evidence or hearsay do not apply. Um, and therefore, um, it is up to you and your discretion, um, to weigh the evidence that you receive. Um, but hearsay is admissible, and in this case, the animal control officer is acting within her official capacity, um, and she, um, has, um, she's relying on her own formal reports that are are part of the record here. Um, and so so there is no issue with admissibility of this evidence. Um, with respect to the the second question and the number of complaints and how far back they go, um, this is a a hearing to determine, um, whether these dogs are are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs, and, um, the the remedies that should be imposed if either finding is made. And although the option of euthanization of the dogs is a potential remedy if they're found dangerous, it's not the only remedy. And, um, if you find that that these dogs are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs but do not need to be euthanized, then you're you're entitled to issue, um, orders and conditions, um, to adequately protect public safety and abate the nuisance. And the the dog owner's ability to comply with those orders, in my opinion, is a relevant consideration, um, if for the board to take into account in deciding what remedy to fashion. So, um, it's my opinion that that all of the the evidence that has been introduced thus far by the animal patrol officer is admissible and may be given the weight that you seek there.
Thank you, um. We can come back to this later on, if you ever, if we take this into consideration or not. Okay. Thanks, do you have more?
So I was looking at the bite, the first bite I see on here, it was in 2005. And then the second was 2013, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, 2013, February 2013 was the first bite, and then.
You said, I'm sorry, you said the first was.
Yeah, but no, for these dogs, for these dogs.
For these dogs, okay, thank you.
Because they're going to go from 2011, I guess, so. And then 2014, attacked her dog, but there was no injuries. But there was injuries on the 2013 one.
Do you know which dog that was?
So unfortunately, I didn't take the name of the dogs at that point.
Okay.
I was new on the job, sorry.
Yeah.
And then the second bite on them was May 2020 for the uh, Andrew riding and his children. And then the Burnses. But the Burnses was a significant injuries to both the Burnses and their dog. And that was the two male dogs. And I guess the female was there, but she just stood there barking, is the report I got.
Okay, thank you. Chief Fitzgerald, do you have anything to add to this?
Madam Chair, do I have an opportunity to cross-examine her?
Um, Attorney Corbo? Is that?
Yes, through you, Madam Chair, um, there is a a right of of cross, limited cross-examination here. Um, I I would suggest that that you allow, you know, questions to be asked, um, however, that you not permit, um, questions that are argumentative or arguments framed in the form of questions. If, um, counsel or the dog owner wished to make arguments to the board, they can do that during their portion of the proceeding.
Ma'am? Ma'am, in your, uh, you said that there was an incident in 2013? And what happened during that incident? Because that isn't in the the file that we were provided.
Reports his dog walker was bitten in the hand while trying to break up a fight between Alex's dog and the chocolate whip. Dog walker is owned by, doesn't matter, of Wenham. Believe that the dog walker will need stitches. ACO stich was notified, that was the ACO two before me.
So who was the victim?
I'm not sure that that, should I get that information?
I don't think we need to say who the victim was.
I mean, you can have that after, I think.
Well, I I believe he's here. So I I want to see if that is corroborated.
Was the dog walker at that time?
I was the dog walker at that time.
And your name?
Uh, William Heffernan.
That's the one on my report.
Yep.
And, um.
And do you have in your report which dog that was?
No, and like I said, it wasn't my report.
Do you have a report of where it happened?
By Colburn, yeah. Right by Colburn, there's a there's a woods up there.
It happened in the woods, ma'am?
It doesn't actually say, would you literally, I mean, Madam Chair, can I give you this?
Yes, please.
I didn't take the report.
Yeah. Who? Yeah, that was in in what we received. Did see that. Because I know whose dog it was.
Oh, yeah?
Uh, and so you said in 2020, you said there was another dog bite incident?
The reporting party reports that a dog was attacked by three other dogs while walking on Colburn with his young children. He's now at home with his dog and three other three dogs. Oh. The reporting party was Alexander, and he said that he was home with his other three dogs. Stated that he was sorry about what happened. No, no injuries. I told him to keep his dogs collared and asked to keep them on a leash. Said he understood, he said he'd be erecting a fence sooner than later. That was in 2020.
So can you clarify if somebody was bitten?
No one was bitten, I said.
Okay, so when you said it, there was a bite in 2020?
There was a dog attack and three children and a gentleman were there, and no one was injured, and it was very scary, I said.
Okay, but you were mistaken. Okay, but you were mistaken when you said bite.
I said dog attack, I think.
I see attack, I wrote down that you said attack.
Well, I wrote down bite, so maybe I'm the only mistake. So there was no bite then. And then 2022, uh, you're referring to the incident with the Burns?
Yes.
And where did that take place?
Same area, right by Three Colburn, right across the street from Three Colburn.
So when that took place, is there any report as to whether the Burns' dog was on leash or off leash?
They're always on leash, they said.
I'm sorry?
The Burns' dogs, that they always walk their dog on leash.
Okay, well, what they said as far as what they always do, do you have any evidence that the dog was on leash?
Only what they told me.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Ma'am, I'm, I'm.
Any more questions from you at this time?
None from you, ma'am, thank you.
We'll, we'll come back. Thank you. Todd, uh, Chief Fitzgerald.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to reiterate one thing, um, I think it was stated at, at the very beginning from Mr. Westerhoff's attorney that, that, uh, Alexander has installed a electric fence. Is, is that, is that correct? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yes, okay. Um, however, since the, I just wanna point out two, two other incidents that were not, uh, uh, brought up at this point. So however, since the 9/17, uh, 2022 incident with the Burns's, uh, we have received two other complaints on loose dogs, uh, and also dogs that have got it into recycling and U.S. mail. Uh, those incidents occurred on October 18th, uh, 2022, and it's most recent is last week, uh, December 14th, uh, 2022. And I believe both incidents, um, Hayes has cited Mr. uh, Westerhoff in regards to those uh, dogs being loose. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Chief.
May I address the Chief?
Sure.
Chief, thank you very much. Um, you said that the dogs got into the mail?
That was on the reports, the U.S. mail, yes.
You ever heard of a dog going into the mail before?
Just this one.
It's a pretty unique situation, wouldn't you say?
It does sound a little baiting. No, I'm saying it sounds like you're baiting him a little bit.
Well, I'm saying, you know, if we're going to talk about that they testified that they always do something, I just wonder if, I, I'm not questioning your integrity at all. I'm just saying, have you ever heard of an incident of a dog going into the mail?
Just this one. Thank you.
So you said that the other complaints were that, that dogs got into the trash?
The trash recycling and the U.S. mail, that's what they said under law.
Okay, oh, you're just reading the report?
Correct.
Okay, you're, so you're not speaking from your observation, okay. Is there anything on the report that says which dog it was?
No.
So this is just the report of somebody who called you?
The report, and there's also, I believe Hayes has a video or a photo, photo of one of the dogs that's in the neighbor's property.
But not in the trash?
Not in the trash, no.
Okay. All right, thank you so much.
Ask, I have one question. These incidents, were they outside the fence line as it were?
Through the neighbor's property.
Okay, so outside this electronic.
The electronic fence just got installed this weekend, it wasn't ever there. People have reports of these dogs, they're like, it's the same dog that's been doing it for the past five, six years. You know, it's not like, I, they don't have a camera every single time that it's the same dog, it's the same gray dog, it's the same silver dog, it's the. Hey dog.
Oh, I'm sorry, Chief, could I ask you one more question? Sure, thank you. Have there been, uh, the fence was put in this weekend. I realize that's a very short timeline, but have there been any complaints since this weekend?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Attorney Corbo? Are we, uh?
Uh, so Ma'am.
Go ahead.
Um, I was gonna suggest, um, that you recognize others who wish to, um, state complaints about the dogs.
Thank you. Okay. We have, I know two people on Zoom who would like to speak to the complaints. Is there anybody here who would like to speak to the complaints?
I'd prefer to go first.
Yes, I'm not talking about in, okay, yes, please. If you would, um, you can sit, you can stand, just state your name and address if you would, please.
It's, uh, William Burns, we live at, uh, Eight Morse Court right now.
And if you want, you're welcome to go to the podium if you want.
No, it's okay, I wanted to, um, you know, this happened a long time ago in September. But, um, I, I have a few photos and I don't think it's at all, um, out of line to show
No.
my hands, my dog, you guys can look at that while I'm providing any answers or whatever. Um, because it wasn't a scary thing, it was a horrifying thing. So with that, um, I don't know what you want from us from testimony besides just telling you what happened that day. I don't know, I didn't expect to get cross-examined here tonight, but, um, uh, whatever. I'll answer anything truthfully and, uh, maybe we just start with our story. I don't know if that's what the people in them want.
We do have the report, um, but I would say, um, if you would like to, please feel free to.
Yeah, Pam, you wanna, do you want me to start or do you wanna start?
Sure, go ahead, go ahead, I can chime in.
So we walked this road every day, uh, for a long time and, uh, we have no idea who Alex is other than, um, I probably waved at him 30 times in a couple of years, walking up and down that road. And, uh, my wife and I were walking our dog in harness, on leash, at the top of the road, near his driveway, when unprovoked, completely unprovoked, these two dogs came over the berm like charge of the light brigade. Tamara and I turn around, these two dogs running straight at our dog, an 11-year-old chocolate lab, in a harness, on a leash. I swear to God, on the Bible, in a harness, on a leash. So, um, and, and Alex, you can, you can ask me a question if you'd like, because you showed up about a minute and a half after the attack started. And I'll swear to God on the Bible on that, uh, he came running after these dogs engaged our dog and Tamara and I had no choice but to do what you told, never to do, which is get in the dogfight. Absolutely didn't wanna do it. But when you people see the photos of our dog, they ripped her apart. So it went on for about four minutes, five minutes max, I guess, time stood still. Alex came running about, uh, Mr. Westerhoff, I guess, I don't wanna sound like I'm familiar with you, so Mr. Westerhoff came running up. At that point, I was in the middle of both dogs, my wife and I had both been chopped up already trying to get our dog away from these two dogs. And they weren't really after us, they were after our dog, but when you're in the middle of that, he did hurt. And my wife specifically turned to Mr. Westerhoff and said, "I'm gonna kick your dog in the head, is that okay?" And he said, "Yes, please do." And this dog had our dog in a death grip on her neck. And Tamara stood there, and I'm not kidding, I mean, you guys, this is PTSD stuff for Tamara and I after this happened. So Tamara's standing there kicking this dog in the head as hard as she can. This dog did not let him go. Not happening. So Alex is yelling at his dogs, I'm yelling at our dog, I try and get the, I'm trying to get the harness off our dog and get her away, it's just a scrum. I mean, we basically were attacked, it was in a, it was just a mauling. And these dogs are going bananas. We finally got Hallie, our dog, away, Alex, you know, Mr. Westerhoff yells at his dogs, whatever. And that third dog was just sort of standing on the side from what I remember. And, uh, it was like the worst four or five minutes of our life, it was outrageous, it was absolutely outrageous. I mean, I don't know if anybody's ever been in a situation like this, but it was outrageous. That's essentially what happened. I mean, Mr. Westerhoff said, "Would you like to come?", he was obviously horrified, saying, "Would you like to, you know, would you like to come to my place to clean up?" And we were just out of there, it was like, I, I got nothing to do with you, your dogs, we gotta go, we had parked down at the pond, we had to walk from up there all the way down to the pond. One of the injuries, you can't really see that greater than our dog, was the largest one. And she had a ton, I don't know how many, 30, 25, 35 stitches, it, on her whole inside of her leg up towards her crotch, besides the staples on her back and besides what you saw on, on her side where she got ripped apart and they had to put a tube in to do any draining out of her cavity, it was outrageous. Simply outrageous, dogs not controlled, that's all it was. I, you know, I've been a dog owner my whole life, I don't, I don't dream to think that our dog, Hallie, is on voice command, these dogs are not on voice command, these dogs should not, I'm not here to say put the dogs down, and I never have been, but these dogs should not see any other humans besides the owner. That's, I mean, do you have anything to add here, I mean, it was like.
No, I think you pretty much summed it up.
We went to, we had to go to the emergency room at Beverly Hospital, there is a civil case that's been started, we haven't heard from these guys, ever. We have, you know, close to five grand in medical bills from our dog going to the Woburn Animal Hospital besides the vet. And they said, not saved her, but they mended her all up. And, uh, we have a couple of grand in bills from going to, uh, Beverly Hospital, my wife is an art teacher, had stitches in the palm of her hand. I mean, this was an outrageous incident, outrageous. I mean, no one should downplay this. Honest to God, I mean, this is not, this is, this is like, we've walked up there and had no incidents with our two little grandchildren before, they're out in Colorado, so they aren't around here all the time. If our kids, our grandchildren had been with us that day, you guys would have a whole different meeting going on here right now, completely different meeting. I mean, this stuff can't go on. That's, that's all I have to say.
Sorry, certainly respect how you do. Anything else?
Madam Chair, um, can I just ask through you to, to Mr. Burns if, um, he can identify of which of the, the three dogs were involved in the, um, attack?
It was the two, uh, the two, are they Wymeranders? Yeah, two, two Wymeranders.
Is the third dog not a Wymerunner?
I don't, I don't even, I don't remember, it was such chaos, I remember he was on the wing.
Doberman mix?
The boys.
So just to clarify, the two dogs involved in the attack were both Wymeranners?
Yeah.
And the third dog that was?
The, the two male are, uh, Wymerunner, Doberman mix.
So they are, they're, not that it, it cannot have any bearing, what the dog breeds are, cannot have any bearing on this.
Yeah, and then, and then the female is a full, uh, bred Wymerunner.
Thank you.
A purebred.
Thank you.
And so, um, Mr. Burns, were both of the, the male dogs sort of equally involved in the attack?
Yes.
Okay. And, um, Madam Chair, if I could, um, through you back to the, um, animal patrol officer, um, were it the same two dogs involved in the other, um, attacks that, that are in your files?
So, yeah, the first, yes, it was the same three and I believe that the two males were the ones that were doing the initial attacking and then the girl was just barking.
Is, is that in, in all of the attacks you described?
So there's only been two real, like, attacks and then one other incident with the dog walker, which I, I thought he was gonna say something because I didn't hear about that, I'd like to hear about that personally.
Okay, so, so you have the 2014 attack, right? And, um, which dogs were involved in that one?
It just says the three dogs that belonged to Alex.
And what about the 2020, um, attack? Is that the one you don't, you're waiting for information on?
Yeah, just, I didn't hear about it, you know, it's the, I never got to talk to the dog walker, I never really heard about it, yeah. No, that's, the 2020 is the, Andrew Riding and his three daughters, there's three young kids. And then the dog walker was the 2013 one. And that was the report, uh, the dog fight and then the dog walker broke it up. So I don't know if it was like a dog-on-dog attack again, it sounds like it's a dog-on-dog aggression and that the people end up getting hurt while they're trying to break up the dog-on-dog aggression fight.
Was the female dog involved in that or only the male dogs? And, um, with regard to your, um, the complaints about the, the dogs being loose, is that applicable to all three dogs or just the male dogs?
All three dogs.
Thank you, um, through you, Madam Chair, back to Mr. Burns, um, have you, aside from the incident in question, have you ever seen the dogs of their property loose?
Nope, no, I have not. And I lived on the other side, I just recently moved, but I lived on the other side of the woods on Loading Place Road from, um, uh, Coburn Road. So I've walked that for 30 years and I hadn't, and I had never seen, um, these dogs, um, off leash or running around before, just me personally.
All right, thank you, Ma- Madam Chair, I have nothing further at this time.
Thank you. So just looking over the, sorry, we can come back to this later, okay. Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Madam Chair. May I, uh, ask for your grace in cross-examining this witness before you move to another one?
Um, sure, I think that the way it is, as, as the attorney said before, just, um.
Actually, it's fine, don't worry. So, so you said you'd lived there for 30 years?
Yep.
And this is the only time you'd ever seen them off leash?
Yep.
And you say you had the dogs on leash at that, your dog on leash at that time?
Absolutely.
You said not, wait, you said harnessed?
Harnessed and leashed.
What, what is a, I don't know the difference.
A harness goes over the dog and you attach a leash to the harness that's on the dog.
Like, like when you see like a service animal in the airport?
Sure, it's got, you, the legs go through, it's a, it's a harness, so it's.
Okay, like, like the vest you're wearing now if you're with a dog?
Yeah, and you got a leash on the top back.
What's it made of?
The harness?
Yeah.
I would say.
Nylon.
Nylon roping and stuff like that, whatever it is, it's a nylon thing.
Do you still have it?
Sure do.
Does it have tears in it?
Does it have tears in it? I don't, I don't know, I washed blood off it, I don't know if it has tears in it, it's pretty, it's pretty old. I, uh, had it in Colorado, so it's pretty old.
Okay, I'm, well, I just, I saw that there were wounds on the sides of the dog and that seems inconsistent with a harness being held, right?
No, it doesn't, no, because the, the legs just go through the harness.
I'm sorry, I'm not trying to get argumentative, I'm just saying, if there was a harness on the dog and there's a wound on the side of the dog.
Um, if you're not familiar with the harness, feel free to bring a picture of one up, but they're, they do not cover the whole body.
No.
They just usually loop around.
Go under the armpits so that it's not, so you're not walking a dog by the, like, by the, by the collar.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm sorry, who is actually the trier up here? Because if, I'm asking him questions, if you've already made up your mind about what this harness is, he testified it was like a vest.
No, you asked, is it like a vest? Now.
You put, you put the dog's legs through it so that you can put a, a leash on the top back.
So it's not like a vest?
No, no, it doesn't cover the dog. No, no, it doesn't cover the dog's body like the vest.
No, okay. So. All right, so you're saying it was, first you said it did, but now you say it doesn't. So we'll take the second answer, I guess.
We'll take the second answer.
So. You say you had it on leash. Were you on Mr. Westerhoff's property?
No, no.
Do you know where the property line is?
I sure do.
How do you know that?
Because I walk up there. I walked up there for almost thirty years, and I was very respectful of never going too far, never getting to where there's a fire road across from this property. I know the area very well.
Don't get me wrong, I'm not suggesting you're disrespectful. I'm just suggesting, do you know where the property line is?
Yeah.
How do you know that?
Well, I mean, I was in the road. That's not the property line. So don't leave the road when I go up to the top.
I'm sorry, the top, where?
Up to the top, it's a dead end. Have you been to your client's house?
I have.
So it's before, anywhere before you get towards this property and where the, the fire road is across the road from it.
Okay, I have no more questions, I guess.
Okay, great. Maybe you can get back to us at another time.
I'm sorry, but look.
Well, our, our counsel's reached out to you guys for a couple of months.
I'm sorry, we, that doesn't.
I mean, I don't mind.
I'm sorry.
No, 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 that, that doesn't pertain to right now, and so.
Excuse me.
No. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
I would like to speak.
Absolutely.
You should take complainants first.
Okay, sorry. Yes, those who have complaints. Is there anyone on Zoom who wants to speak?
I do not have a complaint, but I have, my name is Frank Shaw.
If you're not.
I live in the village.
Mr. Shaw, are you speaking? Are you complaining about the dogs?
I am not complaining about the dog, but I have had, I've been to Alexander's house many times for many parties since April.
Okay, we'll come back to that. Right now, we're talking about the complaints.
All right, not a problem.
But we'll definitely come back to you, Mr. Shaw. Thank you.
Not a problem. I don't know the protocol, so I have public access.
No, no problem at all.
So Madam Chair, through you, can I ask, is the person who was involved in the 2020 incident here?
No, they are not here. Not the 2020.
Okay. And how about the, the folks who were complaining about the dogs?
The dog walker?
The, the folks complaining about the dogs being in their garage, I believe it was Dr. Soheel Samari?
They're not on either.
So is there anyone else who, who has complaints about the dogs that they wish to bring forward at this time?
I would say there are not. We had two people on Zoom who wanted to speak. Peter Menasian?
Hi, Madam Chair, Peter Menasian filed with Home Row.
Are you, do you have a complaint?
No, I don't. You just, no, I'm ready to speak when, when that's appropriate.
Okay, we're just, I, we'll come back to you then as well. All right, Attorney Corbo, it sounds like we've heard from complainant.
Madam Chair, I know this might be out of order, but may I ask Mr. Burns one more question?
I don't, I don't have a problem with that. Is that all right, Attorney Corbo?
Mr. Burns, you said that you weren't looking to have the dogs euthanized. What is it that you think would be appropriate?
That, I've thought from the, you know, from the moment after the incident, having had dogs my whole life, these dogs should not be around, they should not be out and around. They, they're completely unpredictable. If you, if you see what happens, I would say that they need to be, I mean, my, my feeling as a dog lover is keep them penned up behind the electric fence for the rest of their days. And if they ever get out from behind that fence, put them down that day.
Okay.
Period.
So you think the electric fence is acceptable?
I'm not an expert on anything, but I just don't think they should be around humans.
I'm taking your feelings into account.
I, I get it, but I'm just saying, I mean, and I have the feelings that if I had had a knife at that point, or I could have gotten my hands on a rock, they wouldn't be alive to this day, with seeing what they were doing, tearing my dog apart. But be that as it may, I think just keep them away from humans.
So an electric fence, even with an acre buffer, would probably be even better.
Could I add something?
Respectfully, I, I, I don't know.
May I add something?
I think she should add, is the other part of the.
I would say that my experience with electric fences is that they don't, they don't always work.
Are we swearing her in as, as an expert on electric fences? Because if we're not, I don't want to have that testimony part of what you consider.
No, you asked her.
You asked the question.
You asked, right.
I asked him, not her.
So if you ask him, you ask him.
I ask him what he wants.
It's a fair call.
She hasn't, she hasn't testified.
They can weigh the evidence as, as they feel.
You want her to testify. I'm not calling her as a witness. So.
It's not quite the way that I want it.
So. All right, but, I mean, I appreciate your candor about that. That's all. Thank you. Wait, one other thing. You said you moved to Morse Court?
That's correct.
Where's that?
Sometime.
Well, I mean, I get that. I'm sorry, I'm not.
Sometime in the village.
Okay, so you've moved out of the neighborhood?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, Mr. Corbo, before we let others speak?
No, Madam Chair, if there's no one else who has complaints about the dogs, then I think it would be appropriate to hear from the, the dog owner and his representatives.
Okay.
Mr. Corbo, I may address, may I address Mr. Corbo?
Yes.
Mr. Corbo, I know this is not a, a formal hearing in court, but, you know, at this point, I might say, do we need to go through all of this? Because if the victim says that an electric fence would be okay, and an electric fence has been put in, if, if you want to hear from everybody else, we could do that. But if that would be something that everybody could agree upon, maybe we can end this now. If not, I'd be happy to have.
We still have to deliberate. The dog, the dog, dangerous dog and nuisance dogs have been brought before the select board.
Okay.
So it's not a decision between you all at this point.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to imply that. I, I know that it's your decision, but if the board is satisfied that that remediation is enough, will I put everybody through?
We haven't deliberated yet.
Okay.
I have a question for Mr. Westerhoff.
Shall we let Mr. Westerhoff speak, and then we can?
Let him testify first?
Yeah, because we'll come back. Once we close that, then we'll.
Sure. So I have currently three dogs. Lucien Velazquez and Luna. Luna is a puppy. She's four years old, and I don't know why she's listed at, at another attack. That is not true. She was, she is, has her own mind. She likes to play with her ball. She does not run away. She, she listens on command. She's a remarkable dog. Lucien Velazquez, they're twelve years old. They were born in my hand and forty-five minutes apart. And they have given me so much love and pleasure throughout hard times. Individually, if any one escapes, and I'm saying that because I've been very careful that they do not leave the house and do not walk around into the woods off-leash. And if I ever were to walk them, I put a muzzle on them. But I don't feel comfortable walking them anymore. And so I keep them contained in the house. And we have an acre that's fenced in behind the house. So they are contained there. There are a few exceptions when one escapes. Individually, these dogs are zero harm to other dogs. They will not attack any other dogs, and they have never attacked a person. They're, Mr. Burns, I'm so sorry for your injuries and what has happened to you and your wife. It's, it's just awful. It was an awful attack, I have to say. It was, I won't forget either. But there was a problem that I saw during the attack. You were not prepared for an attack. You, you did not know how to behave in a, in a dog attack. And I had to basically deal with two dogs individually attacking your dog. Your dog was off-leash, and your dog was on my property. It was the road. On the road is a private road. It is not a public road. You should have never walked on that road. And you should have never walked in the road that leads up the hill, because that's Philip de Normandy's property.
Coburn Road is, is Philip de Normandy's property?
No, the, the fire lane extension that you're talking about, into the trails into the woods.
But you didn't walk there?
I'm sorry, would, let Mr. Westerhoff speak, please.
So if you didn't walk there, then you certainly walked up to my house.
Up to your house?
Up to my, up to the edge of my property.
I wasn't near the edge of your property. We were, we were right.
Okay, I'm, we're not going back and forth right now.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Anyways, so I'm telling you my side of the story. They were, they were trespassing, being on my private road. This road does not get plowed by the town. I have to pay for my own plowing. And the dogs immediately felt, first of all, the dogs, I never let out, nobody let the dogs out. I, I don't know how they escaped. Maybe the wind blew, a door opened that wasn't locked properly. But I was there, I was there within seconds, not minutes, to rescue the situation. And you had already incurred bites. I did not see the attack on your hands. I very much doubt those bites are from my dogs, because they have not bitten any human. But if they, if they did bite you, I'm sorry, it was an accident. The hands were in the wrong place to break up a fight. I did not get any injuries during this fight. I, I had to basically take these two dogs off of their dog. And I had a problem, because my dogs were not, were not wearing their, their collars, or they were not wearing their leashes. So I, I grabbed my dog. I, I found the dog collar of their dog on the ground. No leash was attached to it. So if you're saying to swear by God that your dog had a leash on, that is incorrect. Because I picked up that dog collar, put it on my dog, lifted it up to get the bite off of the dog. And it worked. And they, they were screaming in the background. I asked them to participate, to kick my dog, to, to release the bite. And I, I, I think my only interest was to save your dog, and I did. If I hadn't done that, if I just stood by and watched, your dog, you know, God knows. But, and also looking at the photographs of your wounds, your, your dog's wounds, if your, if your dog was wearing a harness, how come there's a wound on the top of the back, the shoulder, and on the side? And I think the surgeon in hospital does exploratory surgery. They cut open the wounds.
Would you just speak, please, to your experience? Not, not a supposition of.
Okay, but, but then it, it, I, I don't want these wounds to look worse than they are, because they were just maybe a bite wound. They, he didn't even bleed when I was there. There was no blood on the street. And so these exploratory wounds are done to see if any, there were any organ problems.
Please don't do that.
Okay.
Speak to your experience.
So we've been keeping our dogs contained. Individually, they are of no harm. And we put in this fence. We have gotten great reviews from neighbors. And my, the vice president, I've been serving this town for twenty-eight years as a volunteer for trees. The vice president, I'm currently president, she's vice president. She has this dog invisible fence, and she says it works like wonders. Her dog, after, after getting buzzed the first time, will never cross that border again. I have also implemented not just one line of border where it's most dangerous, where they can see the street. I installed two lines, and this, this particular fence goes off several times. So you don't get tasered once, you get tasered several times after you cross that line. And, and it's just a matter of training. But we don't have to have our dog's dog in the front, ever. We can just leave him in the back, you know? Didn't, oh, I have testimony from a lot of friends and business acquaintances. I've had thousands of people through my house. Not once has a person been attacked. These are babies, families, individuals. And I want you to read these statements.
I've given them a bunch of coffee.
Okay. Um, just.
We're gonna give the bodies, we're gonna get the bodies passed around.
Okay.
So who wants to see it?
Oh, we'll see.
I think we're gonna, we're getting the bodies.
Okay.
Thank you.
I, I want you to read these.
I'm all good, thank you very much.
So you know that they have never bitten a person. So they're not a serious threat or a threat worth enough to, to, to kill them. I mean, what a horrifying thought. They have given me comfort through so many years of hardship. I'm still going through it. You know, they lie in bed with me every night. They console me. I would be absolutely heartbroken to know that my dogs were put down because I was irresponsible. I wished the dog officer had told me that I should have gotten an electric fence long ago, because that would have kept, prevented a lot of problems if she had told me that how cheap it was and easy to install. And I'm sorry, dogs go into the trash, there's no reason to put them down.
Todd Fitzgerald, is, is, do you know what parts of Coburn are, Coburn are plowed by, or maintained by the town? Or are there any parts or not at all?
So I believe it goes right past Mr. Westerhoff's property, getting straight on until wherever it turns right. Is that his drive?
I have pictures.
So are these, excuse me?
That is actually what I got from Chuck Dan today.
As town road or as private?
The entire length of Coburn Road is public.
Okay, so the town maintains that?
Town maintains it.
Okay.
Just to clarify, we're saying, so the attack occurred on a public road?
According to the reports that I'm perused, yes.
Okay. Can we ask questions on Mr. Westerhoff's case? Or is the, do we hear from the remaining parties first and then ask everybody questions? What's the?
I'd ask, I'm trying to think what we did last time.
Madam Chair, can I ask Mr. Westerhoff a couple of questions?
Yes, Mr. Corbo.
Sure.
Can I ask Mr. Westerhoff a couple of questions?
Yes, but before you do. Um, uh, yes, but before you do, um, one of the board members was wondering if we should ask now or later? Members of the board.
Uh, so that's cer- certainly up to you, but traditionally, you know, we like to try to um, ask all the questions to a witness at, at one time before moving on to the next one.
Wonderful, thank you. Um, we'll ask quest, go ahead and ask your questions. Mr. Corbo?
Um, thank you through, uh, thank you through you, Madam, Madam Chair. Um, um, thank you, Mr. Westerhoff, for being here. Um, just a, a few clarifying questions. Um, so you mentioned that your, your property has a, um, I'll refer to it as a physical fence, like an actual fence around part of it?
No, it's, it's an invisible fence, but, but it's a wire fence, so it's a hardwired. So they get, um, they.
Oh, I'm sorry, I.
I think you're misunderstanding this question. He's talking about in the back.
Oh, the back, yes, a physical, a six-foot-tall chain-link fence.
Oh, okay, and um, is that um, like fully enclosed on four sides?
Correct, and um, yeah, that, that's where they go to potty.
Um, and is it um, like connected directly to your house, whereas like the dogs can go
Correct, and it's a, it's a whole.
straight from your house into that fence?
It, yes, and it's a whole acre of uh, fenced-in area.
Okay, and, and then you installed the electric fence in the, a different part of the property?
Correct, in the front part of the property. Um, there's this little um, rise and I, I, I put them all to the top. So that leaves an acre between the fence and the road. And I doubled up the wire.
Between the electric fence and the road?
Pardon?
Is that, I'm sorry, between the electric fence and the road?
Correct, is an acre.
Okay, um, and, and when did you put that electric fence in?
This weekend.
And.
Last weekend.
Did you put it in yourself or was it professionally installed?
I did it myself. It cost six hundred dollars. And I have receipts.
And um, and what um, training did the dogs have on how to use the electric fence?
Um, well, we'll, we'll train it then tomorrow, um, because we haven't had a chance to train them yet and no reason to have them go outside in the front. It's cold.
And um, just one more um, clarifying question. Um, when um, the, the incident happened with the Burns's dog, um, they were, were they inside the um, the chain-link fence or outside the chain-link fence?
No, they were just in, on the, on the street in front of the property. Which is my private road.
Okay, so they were not within um, the, the, the chain-link fence where the dogs go to the bathroom?
No, that's far away. It's uh, yeah, it's two and a quarter acres in the rear.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. No further questions?
May I mention though, since it came up again, the private road aspect? Um, my road does not get plowed and I took pictures of the recent snowstorm just to prove that. Um, so if it is public road, uh, I, I would like to know that so it can be plowed because I've had to do it myself for so many years. And if you wanna see images, I can show you.
No, I'm just thinking of reaching out to Chuck right now. He was, Chuck and Nate were, but they're not on now. Okay, um, is there anywhere that says Colburn Road is a private road?
No, and that's an improvement the town should do because.
Well, if it's a private road, it's up to the residents and the road association to do that, not.
Well, we have it clearly marked, no trespassing. Uh, trespasser will be prosecuted. I have about seven signs. And De Normandy does as well. So the path leading up to De Normandy's property has tons of signage that people ignore.
I'm going to reach out to Chuck right now.
And there's a gate, yes.
Okay, I, I will come back to you in a minute for the Burns.
May I ask?
Yes, please do.
Um, acreage is generally um, a two-dimensional. And what is the distance from the front of your fence in feet? Not forty thousand square feet, but.
Yeah, to the road.
To the road.
Um, the, the electric fence is um, I would say seventy to eighty feet from the road.
Thank you. That's much more than.
So you mentioned during your testimony that during the attack on the Burns', when you were trying to pull them off, your dogs were, and I think you used the phrase, not wearing their leashes?
Yes.
So if the attack occurred on a public road, they were not wearing their, they were not wearing their leashes?
Except it was a private road.
And so that, that's a subject of dispute?
Correct, but um.
Okay, so, so I just haven't, so you answered my question, thank you. You also used a phrase a couple of times when you were describing the dogs. You said individually, they do no harm.
Yeah.
So together, so, explain what you mean.
Yeah, they're, I, I don't know if you know dogs, when they're a pack.
I was a owner for a very long time and I also have a twelve-year-old, German Shepherd.
Okay, one person at a time, let her in, let her ask, please.
So yeah, I'm just trying to understand what you meant by that phrase, individually, they do no harm.
So if one escapes individually, it should not be put to death because it does no harm to anybody. It does not, uh, it would never hurt a soul.
So I guess my question though is, I'm, I'm drawing a conclusion which I may not wanna draw, but um, so together, do the two boys cause harm? I'm, I'm just confused by the phrase, individually, they cause no harm. Are you suggesting that the two males, when they're off on their own, they're a couple of teenage boys and they do harm?
But they never.
I'm trying to understand your fr- your phrasing.
Yeah. They never are, with this one exception, and.
So you're saying they've never escaped together?
Well, actually, the, yeah, the previous attack, I think they did as well, so, but there were no injuries. So that just proves again that they don't harm humans, but you know.
So you're, you're saying they don't harm humans, but they do harm animals?
As a pack, they would harm an animal if they crossed the line to the property.
Okay, so that's my question. Since your lawyer clearly stated, dogs don't look at maps, or I forget how you phrased it, that dogs don't know what the property line is.
Yeah.
Um, are you saying that where the attack occurred, the dogs thought it was your property?
Correct.
And you, how would you know this? How would you, how would you know what they're thinking?
Because they would don't, they don't just go out there and attack.
Okay.
The previous attack happened in the same location, by the way, that nobody gets, got hurt at.
So these um, um, okay, and you're saying you put the electric fence seventy feet back?
Plus feet, yeah.
But does it completely encompass your property, make a nice circle?
Yeah.
So there, there's no way.
So it's, the property is tr- is three and a quarter acres, uh, two and a, and a half acres are fenced in with the wire fence.
Okay. And my last question, thank you for answering my question. Um, my last question is what type of professional training have your dogs had during their lifetime?
When they were babies, um, we had them professionally trained for a year or two. And uh, they, you know, I trained them daily with a sit.
My question was professional training?
Yes.
So when they were babies, so roughly ten years ago? And they're, you, I think you mentioned something about training them with the new electric fence?
Yeah.
Okay, and so that hasn't happened yet?
No, we just installed the fence.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, so I, I have a question, so you.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, Attorney Corbo?
Um, thank you. Um, if I could just provide some um, clarification on, on the issue of the, the property line question?
Yeah.
So um, in the Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter one forty, Section one fifty-seven, it, it contains um, a list of circumstances in which um, a dog should not be considered dangerous. And um, one of those circumstances is if at the time of the attack, um, a person was trespassing on the animal's property, but only if the person or the other animal breached an enclosure in which the dog is from the rest of the public. So the, the trespass exception is actually quite limited to only the circumstance where the, the alleged trespasser is within the enclosure. So in, in this circumstance, you know, if the Burns's were inside the, the chain-link fence um, or inside the house, then that would be a defense if they were attacked in that circumstance and they were uninvited. But um, if they're just out in the open, um, the, the statute does not expect the dogs to know where the property line is unless there is some sort of enclosure. And so um, you know, with all due respect to everyone here, I, I just don't think that whether or not the road is a public way um, is a determining factor um, as to whether or not um, this attack should be considered um, as part of the dangerous dog um, question.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I, I've got a question. So um, how do you manage your dogs on a, a daily basis, et cetera? Normally, the dogs are out in this chain-link area?
No.
Until this weekend or whatever?
No, 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 I, I've, I've, for, for months now, I've been ke- keeping them contained and, and not letting them go out anymore after the trash.
And contained in the house?
Yes.
Okay, so they've been in the house?
Yes, and I let them out to pee and poo.
All right. Oh, okay, that's it, just uh, it's kind of like prison, you just go out for an hour.
It's not a prison.
Almost, okay, but they're out only, only really for uh, just short periods of time?
Yeah.
In that chain-link area, otherwise they are, they are in the house?
Unless it's summer or if it's warm, then, then they're out for long.
Okay. All right, and you, you take them on walks on leashes?
No, I don't do that anymore.
What, what's not anymore?
Um, I used to take them out on leashes.
Give me a time frame.
Three, four years ago.
Okay, all right.
Um, uh, but uh, they, they have, you know, they've shown as a group, when I take them out, they're uh, aggressive towards other dogs. So I've stopped doing that and I have, uh, if I walk them, I only walk them individually with a muzzle on, on a leash.
Okay, so how do you speculate they got out? Well, they've got quite a rap sheet here, quite, I assume these are all the dogs over several, it's been several years.
Yeah.
But they've gone out, what, just somebody opens a door and they're out like a shot?
Yeah, somebody opens the door, um, a railter, um, opened the door and she left, uh, she left, Lasky out, you know, just.
All right, so these are all?
Like, out, it's a very rare incidences.
Okay, I mean, se- several of them.
And, yeah.
Okay, all right, so otherwise, they are, are never out unless they are on, on leash and then you don't do that anymore?
Correct.
Okay, all right, now you put up this electric fence.
Yeah.
Does this encircle your entire property, including your uh, chain-link fence?
Correct.
Okay, so it, it's like a second line of defense here?
It does. Yes.
If they should get out?
Yes.
Okay, um, but they have not been o- otherwise?
Correct.
Okay, now, I happened to take a drive up there. I've only been up at Colburn once or twice in my life.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and I saw that you have a sign up that says, there are loose dogs.
That's an old sign, isn't it?
Uh, I wasn't really looking at the years, but it was, it was a sign. That, what, didn't look like it was up this weekend.
No.
Okay, is that because occasionally these dogs might get loose and you want to let people know?
No, I put that out when they were loose and um, when it was acceptable by the neighborhood. The new neighbors do not like my dogs being on the loose, so um, I've stopped that. But it doesn't mean I should take down the sign.
No, no, I was just trying to understand the rationale for the sign.
Yeah.
It's up there, like, people like, might come by, would expect that there are loose dogs, but the fact is, is that's not the case.
It's, it's more to defend the home because I have, uh, I, I'm in the woods. I like to be protected, uh, and I, dogs are the best deterrent for people who want to break in or to murder me.
Okay.
And I've almost been murdered back in, cause, yeah, so.
All right, okay, so the, the sign has been up, I, I, I do accept the fact it's probably been up there for some time. I mean, when I look at it, my expectation is, is that, you know, there are, there's a, a dog that is, that people let out and run around on their lawn or something like that, but this is.
That's the intent, yeah.
Okay.
Brian?
It's an awful lot to uh, wrap my head around here. I've heard, I've heard conflicting uh, stories. I questioned, uh, it seems that there, the dogs escape more than on a rare occasion, all right? Just for the last couple of months and that's a concern.
Okay, can I address that concern?
I'll meet.
Um, one neighbor, uh, Cynthia Commonos and, and Philip, um, she has a bean or bonnet about me living in her neighborhood ever since I posted on Facebook that I would, that um, five houses on Long Hill were for sale at the same time, which was uh, like, uh, serendipitous, um.
Um, I'm going, right now, you're kind of going off topic here. Do you wanna talk about her?
Okay. Um, she has. She has vengeance, and so she will report every time she sees the camera showing Lasky in her driveway.
But the dog, but that, there's a reason why she's making that report. The dog is out.
Yeah.
Okay, so this rare occasion is worth a while.
But, but, but she, she also took a picture of tra- a trash bag. It was not in a container, um, that you sent me. And that trash bag, um, there's no, there's, there's no proof that he was in that trash bag. We have crows, we have foxes, we have fisher cats, we have.
With all due respect, you also said that the, the, the uh, the, the bites on, on the picture on Mr. Burns's hand were not a result of your dog.
That is possible, yeah.
Okay, so I just, there, there's a lot of questions I have here.
I mean, you could examine the, the, the wounds and make sure the dog bite matches one of my dogs.
All right, that's more for a CSI TV show than for what we're doing here.
Yeah.
All right, I, I, I can't imagine someone.
But they were breaking up a fight and got their hands in.
Okay, and then you did say that these people were uh, unaware of how to break up a dog fight.
Yeah.
I have no idea how to break up a dog fight. I don't think anyone here knows. Yes, I do.
You have a dog?
All right, and I don't, and I, I was never trained how to break up a dog fight, so.
You can.
I'll give that.
It's good to know though, when you, because I've broken up many dog fights with people without my dogs around.
No, I'm just saying, it, it's, it's, I think it's an awful lot to ask of the common person to know how to break up a dog fight. But anyway, that's, I was just trying to absorb all of this at this point.
Kathy, any more questions?
Um.
Or Mr. Westerhoff right now?
No.
Anne?
I'm, I'm trying to picture the layout of the house, the electric fence and the chain-link fence. The chain-link fence is at the back of the house and encloses an acre or two?
An acre.
How is it fenced at the bottom?
Um, it rebar, so they can't roll underneath.
Have they ever escaped from that area?
When it was not rebarred, yeah.
When was it rebarred?
Um, two thousand to, two thousand eleven. It was just after we put the fence in, we realized Lasky managed to roll himself under the, uh, the chain-link.
Have, they have not escaped from the chain-link area?
Ever, after that.
Back since?
Yeah.
Okay. So all of the complaints that we've, we've heard of your dog is missing or your dog um, is in somebody else's yard, all of those were from accidentally, they're accidentally coming out of the front of the house?
Um, I would say the, the, yeah, the most recent ones were that way. Before that, um, when Chris Smith lived next door and it was his favorite buddy to go with. Before that, when Chris Smith lived next door and it was his favorite buddy to go with there every day and to get treats, that, that's when they were, when only Lasky was loose, Lucian would not go there. So Lucian does not get in the trash.
So which dog is it that is pictured in coming out of your yard?
In, in, that's Lasky, yeah. He loves, he loves to get in the trash.
I'm still trying to figure out, there seem to be lots of reports of your dogs either being missing or.
That isn't, I don't agree with that because we're talking over a twelve year time period and a lot of these incidences that you're talking about is from previous dogs. I've had six dogs in this time period. So the.
So you had other dogs when you acquired your current, the older of your current, right?
The older, the two brothers, yeah, were born by Nomi. She, so that was in two thousand ten. So any previous attacks were the parents.
Okay, so the parents were there and you had the puppies and the parents and the puppies were together until the parents passed?
Correct.
Okay.
I had four dogs at one time, together.
And, and I have actually got the reports in order, but it still seems that there were a number of cases when you called to say your dog was missing and then called back to say your dog was found again.
Right, so that was, that was years ago.
That was, okay.
When we did let him go out and do his thing, yeah.
How long has it been that your new neighbor has been next door?
Since twenty twenty. And he, Mrs. Sami took a very strange approach when he discovered, and he's talking in the report that there were dozens of incidences. There are no reports of those incidences and it's all imagination, honestly. He could have called me, I'm next door, he could have walked over to me and said, hey, Alex, we've got a problem. Never did, not once. So the first time I heard about that was just after they moved in, the wife came to my house screaming that my dog stole their pizza, which they, if the pizza delivery guy delivered into the garage. And I apologized and explained to them that the previous owner fed him almost on a daily basis. And, and.
So they did report to you that there was a problem?
At that point, yeah. And, and so it stopped for a long time because they kept the garage door closed until twenty twenty-two, when they decided to keep it open. And my, my dog, Lasky, then got into their garage and caused a mess. And so he shows up at my house screaming belligerently, like I've never heard screaming before, that he was gonna shoot my dog next time.
As the police chief has reported, it's within five hundred feet of the house and therefore a bad idea.
Oh, okay, because she told me he was okay. She got shocked with getting into the trash at the time. But anyways.
So the neighbors have, the neighbors have contacted you about?
No, through the police, yeah, twice.
No, but they've also contacted you each?
No, once.
Well, once for the pizza and once for the mess in the garage.
Correct.
Both numbers in the couple?
Yeah, not dozens of times, not dozens of complaints.
She said both numbers, that's a problem.
No, well, yeah, I guess the first complaint was by the wife. The husband sent her over there and the second complaint was with the husband. I, I called the police and I was lured for the wife because he went back home and screamed at his wife and his children to the point that she said, I hate you. It was loud screaming, just like it was in front of my door. I was afraid that he had a gun because I didn't even acknowledge I was in the house, the lights were all out. And, you know, it scares me how much hatred there is.
How many times do you think your dogs have got out of the house in the past few years?
Would he go and each other to the trash?
No, no, no. No, they broke out and were loose.
They were individually?
Yeah, how many times?
Or as a group?
Each dog counts as a, as an incident?
Many incidents. They, you know, he likes, he'd like to go out in the neighborhood and.
I'm looking for a number and I'm looking for a number after your new neighbors moved in.
Okay.
And you've been screamed at for having your dogs loose and?
Oh, after that, I stopped, I stopped letting them out.
How many times have they escaped?
As many times as have reported to the police. So that's five, seven times. But not in twenty-two, in twenty-two, it's only three or four times, you have to check the records.
Oh. Madam Chair, could we have the dog office or confirm us?
The dog, the animal that's lost.
Yeah. Thank you.
Very much.
How many reports did you have of loose dogs?
Since, since two thousand twenty?
Since two thousand twenty.
I think there were six, seventeen.
That was going back much longer.
Five, six, seven. Ah, yeah, nine.
Six.
Six since two thousand twenty, so that confirms what?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I agree, everyone is too many and that's why we installed this fence, so it doesn't happen again.
How much experience do you have at training dogs to use an electric fence?
I haven't any experience, but it's, well, displayed on YouTube that it's effective and how it's done.
Would you consider hiring a professional to train your dogs to the fence?
Yes.
And that fence would capture a dog who came out of any door in your house, except the ones in the back?
Correct. Correct, it is completely enclosed.
That satisfies my curiosity at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ann.
I, so when you saw, you said this past weekend, you self-installed?
Yeah.
The invisible fence? And you did two loops, correct?
I did a dub, a double line in the front where the road is visible. Just in case they got through the first one, they would get zapped multiple times.
So it's not double all the, is it around your entire property, simply in the front?
Correct.
And is it, is it buried or is it laid on top of the?
It's both. Like where the rocks are, you can't bury them.
Oh, I understand them well.
Yeah.
I know them well, having had dogs for many years as well. And how did you decide upon which type of invisible fence to use?
I did my research online and then I went and picked the best and most expensive available at the pet store.
Okay, and I was going to ask about the training as well, but Ann did that. I did want to, you know, going back, you said since two thousand eleven. And there are, starting in the twelve that have been reported, loose dog, then the dog walker got attacked. Then in two thousand fourteen, another neighbor said that dogs were loose and attacked her dog, though there were no injuries. Two thousand sixteen, lose, two thousand sixteen lose, two thousand eighteen lose, and then we get into the attack of the riding family, no one injured. And then the remainder of the ones on Coburn, excuse me, Colburn. And, and I understand that at one time, a neighbor was friendly with your dog. And I, I've, I've been up in the area quite a bit over the years. But the bottom line is, we have a leash law in town. And your dogs are not supposed to leave their property. So when you say somebody leaves the garage door open on their property, they should be able to do that. Doesn't matter if a previous owner was friendly to your dog and encouraged them to come over. I, I, I just, there are a lot of issues with the dogs getting loose. And I, you've even stated conflicting comments about they'd never bite anybody. Well, but when they're together. Or when I take them out on a leash, I want, I have a muzzle on them, but I don't anymore. Wymerunners are energetic dogs.
Yes.
And again, the breed has no bearing on this, what we're talking about. But they do need exercise. So, and, and they do love to run. Do they have that opportunity in the fenced-in area?
Yes, they have two acres in the front of, I'm sorry, an acre and a half in the front of running on lawn, yeah.
But they wa, and up until now, they could, they just ran loose, they'd go wherever they wanted?
Not until now, I stopped when the garbage complaints came in. Because I got a clear message.
Okay, and, and there, I, I do know there have been other neighbors who've had concerns.
Okay.
Ann, did you have another question? Yes.
If you have a large area in the back of the house that's got a fence that they can't get out of, they, that isn't the place where they can go and run?
Yes, they do. And in the summertime, in the spring, I let them out for hours, it's, you know.
I see.
It's only the winter.
Right, right now, when it's cold, but.
They have no fur.
They haven't got coats?
No, Lucian has alz, I mean, Alzheimer's.
Allogneia?
No, Addison's disease, since he was a baby, he gets treated daily. And, yeah, he lost all his fur.
So, so in, at the, in the cold months, they don't get much exercise?
Oh, they do get exercise, the house is humongous, they run in the house.
Yeah, that's true.
We do want to hear from the other people in support of, but I, before we go on, I would like to recognize the Burns's.
I just want to correct a couple things that I, that we heard said. Number one, we were never near Mr. Westerhoff's. We were near his property, but we were never, ever on his property or where it probably starts. We were on the, actually where this attack occurred was right in front of the driveway of the people who you mentioned a few times, who were beside themselves over having the trash taken out of their garage. So we were right on the road there. And number one, number two, I don't know what collar you found or any of that stuff, but the collar that the dog is wearing right now back at our apartment is the collar that she had on at that time. And we still have the harness. So number one, we were not on your property, we were on the middle of the road. And number two, we have the stuff. I don't, I don't really want to get into nitpicking, but.
Are you suggesting I stole your dog's collar?
No, I'm not suggesting anything, I'm just saying I heard one thing, but I know what I walked away with because I walked the dog back down the road with her collar on and a leash on it with the harness in my hand that I had to pull off her while the three dogs were going at it. While my dog was defenseless and trying to defend herself, I was trying to yank the harness off her and get her out of there. And that's, it was a scrum, it was, it was.
I remember specifically at the end of this fight that I grabbed a collar, it wasn't anybody else's collar, my dogs didn't have collars. I grabbed a collar off the road, which was right next to where the attack was happening, and put it on my dog's neck, so I could release my, the dog's bite. I remember your wife having a leash around her shoulder. And then after we broke up the fight and I asked you guys to help break up the fight because I can't handle two dogs. And, and when it, we were successful, your wife put the collar, or I put the collar back on your dog and, and your wife put the leash on your dog.
Right, so you don't have.
That is the truth.
You don't have the dog's collar and you don't have any of that stuff and we weren't on your property and?
You were on, on the private road.
We're not, that, we're not going down there. All right, what we're.
Madam Chairman, is it, can we leave? Is it okay for us to leave now? There's nothing else that really need to hear about this. Is that out of line?
Let me just ask, Attorney Corbo, is it, is there any problem with the Burns's leaving?
I, I don't think so, Madam Chair, I mean, they've given their testimony. I guess, I would ask Mr. Westerhoff's attorney if he has any for their release?
No, no, they're free Americans.
Yeah, I would say the only, you know, if, when, before you do, does the board have, any members of the board have any questions for the Burns's, further questions?
No, not right now.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Okay. If others would like to speak on behalf of Mr. Westerhoff, we invite you to do so at this time. But if you have something new to offer, please do so. If it's reiterating what we've heard already, I don't think we need to, or just keep it brief, please. State your name and address.
My name is Elizabeth Murphy, I live at Ten Heritage Drive in Salem, Massachusetts.
Did you write a letter?
I did.
So we did read what you had to say, correct?
I'd like to read it so that it's entered into record, please. I can read it quickly.
Okay.
Dear members of the Select Board, I've known the dogs at three Coburn Road since October of twenty thirteen. I was their pet sitter from March twenty fourteen through January twenty nineteen. The senior dogs, the two males, Lasky and Lucian, are huge sweethearts who love everyone they meet after they finish greeting them with their big dog voices. The young female dog, Luna, is just a happy-go-lucky little girl who just wants to play. I have seen these dogs, especially the senior males, interact with dozens and dozens of different people over the past nine years. Workmen, deliverymen, antique transporters, many friends and strangers and their owners, Alex and Toby. And I have never, not one time ever, seen either of the males or the females so much as curl a lip or growl at anyone who came near them. Yes, they do bark, they use their voices in greeting and excitement. They love to yell at wild turkeys, but they do not pose a threat to any human being whatsoever. Before I finish the letter, I want to add, I have witnessed these dogs also with a little toddler running around in the midst of them. And the dogs did not go after her as if she were prey, they just let her be. That's the only new thing I want to say. These dogs are giant babies who just want to snuggle up as. These dogs are giant babies who just want to snuggle up as close as they can possibly get. I've slept in the same bed with them, I've cared for them up to three weeks at a time, um, during a blizzard, in fact, so, um, I could attest to the plowing situation. Uh, I've observed many interactions through the last decade. And I repeat, these great big imposing looking dogs are gentle giants who just want and deserve a whole bunch of love. I ask that you please take into consideration that the boys are quite old now. They are both under the care of a vet. And I beg you to please, please allow them to live out the remainder of their lives along with their little sister in the care of their owners who love them so very much. Thank you for your care and consideration.
Thank you. Did you want to speak? Oh, did you have a question for her? Yes.
Did you ever see the two male dogs around other dogs?
No, thank you.
Did you want to speak?
I appreciate the opportunity, I, I, I am good.
Anybody else? Yes. Your name and address, please?
Olga Klatnitsky, 311 Main Street in Holden. And, um, I'm Alexander Westerhoff's friend. I met him in 2017, and I remember that evening, December 3rd, when I walk in the house, and there was three dogs there, and I was raised in a family where dogs were not allowed. So you can understand my kind of position, that I'm kind of have a fear of the dog. But with his dogs, I was, uh, instantly comfortable. And for the past two years, I've been visiting Alexander's house on and off. Basically, I was spending four days out of the week. And, uh, well, right now, what I'm hearing about all incidents, it's like a news for me because the dogs, it's like, I never seen them attacking anyone, never was like a threat to anyone, so, and I understand that's animals. And you know, if someone is provoking them, they would defend themselves.
Okay, um, anybody have questions? All right, um, Mr. Shaw, please state your, um, your name and address.
My name is Frank Shaw, I live in Ipswich, Massachusetts. My address is 126 County Road, Suite B213, at the Cable Gardens Apartment Complex in Ipswich. It's a senior apartment complex. I have been over to Alexander's house many, many times. I've attended many, uh, social functions and parties and, uh, gatherings. And I, the dogs have never been a problem, I, that's my testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Peter, uh, name and address, please?
Peter Van Assi in 5 Wood Home Row. And Madam Chair, I think it's been established that there, that there appear to be absolutely no issues at all with, with the dogs and with humans. I, I've been out to Alex's house many times, as the gentleman before me explained, for meetings as well as large events where there have been hundreds of people. Uh, so, in, what I'd like to say is, I, I know, I, I know Alex's love for his, for his animals. And given the serious nature of this hearing, I have no doubt that he will take every step necessary to remedy the issues that are before the, that are before this hearing. And, uh, and I, and that's my, that's my statement.
Thank you. Does the board have?
I'm sorry, I'd like to make an amendment, um.
Your name and address again, please?
Elizabeth Murphy, 10 Heritage Drive, Salem, Massachusetts. Forgive me, I, I get a little brain fog sometimes, and it's been a long time that I've known these dogs. I have, in fact, seen them near another animal. It was when my friend Steve and I took them for walks. We had them each separately on leash with the muzzles. And they pulled a bit, but they did not try to leave up our grip. They were controlled by the leash, they did not lunge, they did not try to go after other animals. We took them on a walk through the fire road area, through those woods. And a whole lot of people walk their animals there on a regular basis. We did come across at least one dog walker who had an animal. So I just wanted to amend my statement because there was one that I do recall.
Thank you. Um, Officer Demille, do you have anything else to say to this?
So, I had, like, thought about a couple of recommendations myself, um, and regarding Chapter 140, Section 157, and any of the things that we could impose. If you wanted to hear my suggestions, I would suggest those right now, but not.
Yeah, no, I, absolutely.
So I want to suggest, uh, part I, um, which is the dog be humanly restrained, um, chained, tethered, or whatever, which would be the fence, obviously would be fine with me.
Physical fence.
A physical fence, yes, ma'am. Um, keep the dog provided, be secured, um, outdoors, securely, independent, run, um, secure shelter. Um, when removed from the premises, I was going to suggest the dog be securely humanly restrained with a chain or tethering device, minimum tensile strength, 300 pounds, not exceeding three feet and length. I was going to suggest, um, that the information be provided by, for all the dogs, like picture, video, veterinary exam, tattoo, microchips, we know exactly who we're dealing with every time. That's all my suggestions.
Thank you, and the information, to whom would that go?
To Town Hall, Town Clerk's Office, and Police.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chief, it's Charles.
I'd just like to make one recommendation to what Hayes just said, that the, the fence be inspected by a licensed dog company that installs those fences, or licensed installer, and to show that it actually works. Okay, I would like to see Hayes inspect that fence with, uh, on a monthly basis for the next six months.
Would that be both the physical and the invisible? Thank you, Chief. Anyone on the board have a question for the Chief?
I have a question. What are the recourse's if we find that these measures don't, uh, work?
We come up with.
Do we come back? Do we come back? Is that what this, how that works? Then what timeframe is, is that an emergency meeting?
We set that.
Or, uh, okay.
So, Attorney Corbo, would you like to address that question? About enforcement of the law?
Yes, thank you, through you, um, through you, Madam Chair. Um, so if the board, um, is to issue an order that, um, the dogs be confined to the property and within the fenced and enclosure, um, and those dogs are, excuse me, and those dogs are found off of their property, um, they can be seized by the Animal Control Officer and impounded. And if the board finds that there's been a violation of its order, um, those dogs, um, will, cannot be returned to the owner. And, um, the owner will be prohibited from owning a dog in the Commonwealth for a period of five years. Um, in addition to that, um, there are criminal penalties, including fines and imprisonment available, um, for violations of an order of this board.
Thank you. Thank you, Attorney Corbo. Okay, Corbo? I'm having problems with Colburn and Corbo.
So I, I have a question. So the recommendation that you've got is that the dog be confined to the chained, the fenced-in area, okay?
I don't think an electric fence would do it.
Well, yeah, and I'm looking at the record here, which is not particularly great. The dogs, one or more of the dogs have been, seem, seem to get out like once a year, or more.
If electricity goes down.
We only know what's been reported, okay, this is a, this is a, a problem. So, you know, the electric fence notwithstanding, um, I think it's up to the homeowner, if he wants an electric fence, it's going to be a second line of defense. I would assume that the dog, you don't want the dog outside the front door under any circumstances. But if he does, what's Plan B? I'm not familiar with electric fences to the extent that if an animal does not see an electric fence for an extended period of time, the animal doesn't know how to react. Is that something that there has to be interaction, and I would, I would defer to, uh?
They remember them, once they get, yeah, if, it, it typically. But it's, different breeds react to, and I've had some breeds with very large necks and some without. But to the point of, um, Officer Demille, she said that when the power goes down, you don't have your. Um, but the question is, does, do any members of the board have any other questions? Or are we ready to close the evidentiary part and then?
Deliver it.
Deliver it.
Make, make a statement.
Sure, I don't.
I'll make it short, just saying, I don't, I don't know why my dog Luna is included in the list of criminals. She is the most harmless, wonderful, loving dog. Um, and she can run around freely, um, we, all she cares, she's always by our side because all she cares about is throwing a ball. I can throw the ball in the woods, I can throw the ball in singing beach. This dog is completely 100% harmless, and it would never want her taken away from me. Um, because she's not aggressive in any sort of fashion. And I, I, I've been a dog lover all my life. Um, I, I know how public it takes, so I will, um, the, the sentence that, uh, the attorney had proposed, um, if one dog got out, it would be Luna, it would be horrific to put her down or to bring her to someone else. Um, because I, we play with her all the time in the loose and it's, and, and, and she, all she does is play ball with us. In the front yard and the backyard.
Well, that goes back to what I said earlier about having identification on the dogs so we know exactly who we're dealing with at any time. So they would have a certain collar of a certain collar, per se. And then that dog wears that collar every day, and then, you know.
And that's, that's something, yeah.
Excuse me, you said one, we would like to see them chipped if possible?
If they have a microchip, we need to know their numbers, and it, it would be helpful. They are all microchipped, so we should just have that information available so that if we do catch, happen to catch a dog on the street, we can chip them and see who it is.
Okay, and we're all dog lovers here, so I don't, that's, that's, nobody is. Yeah, this is never easy to do. We, I've, I've sat in on dog hearings before. They're not easy. And again, we all love our babies, so it's, it's, but we, as the owners, are responsible. It's our responsibility to keep them safe and follow the bylaws of the town. And there is evidence that this has not necessarily been the case. So now we are going to have to talk about what we think would be in the best interest of the people of the town.
I have been very responsible, or we would have seen many more cases. Um, I've been, uh, very responsible keeping my dogs.
Mr. Westerhoff?
Yeah.
That's, we're, I, I think we're done getting information at this point.
We need a motion to deliberate, or is that, oh, we just deliver?
We just close the evidentiary part.
So a motion to close the evidentiary portion?
I move to.
But wait a minute, before we do.
I have just one more, one more question.
Yes.
Or actually, it's more of a comment. Luna may be the most wonderful dog in the whole world, but the town bylaw says the dog must either be on leash when off your property or, um, under voice control.
Yes.
Is she under voice control?
She is.
But unattended?
She's always attended, she's always attended, she's an attention seeker.
So if you leave your property with us, then she would be under voice control.
Yes.
But she's, if she, if she escapes, then she's not.
She never escaped, she has no interest.
Has she never escaped?
She has never escaped.
So she was not down on the road with the other dogs?
Yes.
That one, okay.
Goes with the Burns.
And she's not been loose, was it 2000, with the other dogs down on Bennett Street? Um, there were three loose dogs. There were two, two times listed here that there were three dogs.
No, that was the mother.
That's a long way, but it's here.
Yeah.
And then they were returned to you.
Yeah, that was not her.
Ancient County Way, that was two. All right, anyway, we're just.
Yeah, she, she doesn't like to escape, she doesn't want to.
But she has.
Roam in the woods, only in that one occasion.
Okay, any other questions or comments from? Chief? Okay, um, Attorney Corbo? Do you have any other questions, or?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I have, um, I have no further questions.
Okay, so do you feel it's reasonable for us to go ahead and close the evidentiary part at this point?
Um, yes, I do.
Okay. May I have a motion to close the evidentiary portion?
So moved?
Second.
Oh, that was a quick one. Okay, moved by Kathy Bellata and seconded by?
Whoever you like, I didn't say anything.
John Round. Okay, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes as well. So all comment is done, and now it's just for the board to deliberate. I have listed the four recommendations that we've had. I'd like to go around and hear what the board members feel at this point.
So, um, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Um, I'm sorry, may I, I'm sorry, may I interrupt, but?
No, thank you.
Procedurally, before the board starts to talk about what the options are, I, I would suggest that the board make a decision that it finds that these dogs are nuisance dogs or dangerous dogs, or neither.
Thank you. Um, and I, I, I believe that what was brought before us was that the two male dogs, as date was, were listed as possibly dangerous dogs, and that Luna was a nuisance dog. Any comments, starting with you, John?
No, I, well, if you're talking about the nuisance versus dangerous classifications, I agree that that's, that appears to be what the situation is. Luna has not been accused of biting anyone or trying to bite, but certainly has been hanging around with the wrong crowd.
I think she got a tattoo.
And what do you think about, um, dangerous for the males?
Yes, no, I agree with that.
Brian?
I, I totally agree, I think that, uh, Luna, I couldn't have said it better, John, I wish I had said it first.
You can say it again.
Yeah, no, it's just that it's guilty by association, how's that? Uh, but there is, there is definitely evidence to prove, to show that the two male dogs are dangerous.
Kathy?
So, I do believe that the two male dogs are dangerous to other dogs. And, um, so if that is part of the definition for danger and dangerousness, then yes, I believe they are dangerous. And I do not believe Luna could, um, be identified as dangerous. then yes, I believe they are dangerous, and I do not believe Luna could, um, be identified as dangerous. When the owner of the dogs says that he will not walk them together because they are aggressive, that does it for me right there. So, um, that's, that's the reasoning. And, and, and somebody asked earlier, have you ever been in this position? I have actually been on both sides of this coin. Um, when I was walking my baby toddler, I was attacked by a neighbor's dog when I lived somewhere else. Scratches, the whole thing, emergency room. On the other hand, I grew up with German shepherds, and my father trained them to be protective of our store and our property. They never bit a soul, because we had tight control over them physically. They were never let loose, and they never escaped. So that is my background. I see both sides of this coin. And the history of the escapes, it is an owner's responsibility to make sure that does not ever happen, period. I'm a little concerned about Luna, because she has been hanging around with a bad crowd. And when we get to the point of discussing options, I think there need to be different options for her versus the, um, the dangerous dogs. That is my thinking right now.
I concur, um, the two males, um, particularly when they're together. Some can be more dangerous dogs. And the fact that they attack other dogs doesn't mean that they don't attack humans, because the other dogs are almost always with humans. And once you get into a dogfight, it's very hard to avoid. So, um, I think we should consider separate treatment for them, for Luna.
Um, and I too, like Kathy, have been on both ends of the, uh, the, the dog issue. And being on the receiving end is something that never leaves you. But again, we do love our dogs. And, um, I, I think that what we've heard does speak, and what you yourself have said does talk to dangerous temperament of the boys. Um, and I agree. I think Luna, we need to look at differently. So, I guess we need to... Attorney Corbo, do we make a motion to designate the two males as dangerous dogs and Luna as a nuisance dog?
Um, yes, Madam Chair. Based on, on the discussion that I'm hearing, um, it sounds like that's the consensus of the board. Um, and in, in my opinion, you can do that in a single vote.
Okay. Um, may I have a motion to?
Yeah, I think I have a closing statement before you take that vote.
Hmm, we've already closed all the evidentiary.
I'm not asking you to, to offer evidence.
Attorney Corbo? Uh, Mr. Westhoff's attorney wants to make a closing statement?
Um, that, that's up to your discretion, Madam Chair. Um, you've already closed the, the evidentiary portion of the hearing, and, um, you're ready to take a vote. But, um, if, if you feel that, that counsel has, um, information that might be useful to you, it's within your discretion to hear that.
Okay, thank you. Um, how does the board feel?
I'd just assume here.
Okay.
John?
Yes.
Brian?
I'm a biblit, okay, sure.
Kathy?
I knew true.
I, I would.
I, I appreciate that. Um, and I also wanna appreciate Chief, General Control Officer, thank you for not just tonight, but for what you do to keep this town safe, you know, your integrity and your testimony tonight. But I'd like to make sure that while you're disambiguating the, the three dogs, which I, I'm glad to hear that you are doing, I want you to also consider the fact that it seems that what we've heard is each time there has been a problem. We, we've used the word attack, but attack means two different things. And I'm not gonna say what happened with Burns was not an attack. That's a good use of that word. But then there were other so-called attacks where all it was was barking. Somebody was scared, granted. But all of these took place, and there was some dispute, is it on his property or not? Is it private property or isn't it? But if you heard the testimony here, you heard that this neighborhood was kind of accepting that the dogs would run from one house to the other, that the dogs got used to a certain area being their turf. Then if they don't know where the property line is, he doesn't know, none of us actually know, the dogs certainly don't know. They're protecting their territory. That's not outside of the behavior of a normal dog. Now, Alex has created this second line of defense. If one of these dogs gets out, if it happens to get out of the house, it's gonna hit that electric fence. He's going to, uh, uh, the chief's recommendation, I thought, was a very wise one, that maybe there be some professional training about how these things are gonna recognize where that fence line is. But I think before you designate both of these other dogs as dangerous, you consider the fact that any time, in fact, the only time that they've actually been accused of biting somebody here was defending their territory. Doesn't mean it isn't a problem, and it doesn't mean I don't think you should fashion a remedy. Were I on the board, I would probably fashion a remedy that said this electric fence had better be put in right, should be inspected, should be a line of defense to keep them from escaping out into the wild. And Alex has gotta be more careful about that. But I think designating them as dangerous, I think is overstating it. And, and I understand your statement, ma'am, about, you know, what he said, but, you know, with all respect, his, English is not his first language, although he's quite fluent at it. But if he's not taking them out to different places, it's because he just, you know, he doesn't wanna deal with the hassle of it. So, so I do appreciate all of your time. I appreciate how long this has taken, and your questions have been very good, you know, and I think everybody's trying to do the right thing here. So I just wanna thank you for that on my behalf and on Alex's behalf, and, uh, leave it to your wise judgment.
And I will say, you are actually speaking to evidence in a bit. And by saying there was only one attack, and that was disputably private property or not, that's not quite true. There was one neighbor who called and said the dogs were on her property and attacked her dog. There was another time where somebody else, and that's in the report. So it's, I don't think that, that what you're stating is completely accurate based on police reports. Now, we're done with that part, so we're going to go on to, uh, designating whether the dogs are, the two males, dangerous and Luna nuisance.
What you're...
What do you, what, what are you looking for, for a motion?
Motion to designate the two male dogs, Lucian and...
Los Angeles.
Los Angeles. Los Angeles.
Thank you. As dangerous dogs and Luna as a nuisance dog.
I, I don't feel we have enough evidence on Luna to label her anything personally. Um, she's hanging around with a bad crowd. Um, I, that piece of it, I... Mm-hmm, that's fine. I'm a little uncomfortable with that piece of it.
Well, shall we take it with the two male dogs first?
Mm-hmm.
That, that we declare the two, I move that we declare the two male dogs to be dangerous.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellata, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacey?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. Okay, um, with Luna and?
Excuse me, Madam Chair. So we're, we're unaware if Luna has been far, uh, going through the trash, getting out, uh...
Right.
I don't know. Never, yeah. I just don't feel we have been able to identify the dog. That would, that would be great, but I just...
Okay.
Okay, so... I move that we declare Luna to be neither dangerous nor a nuisance.
I don't think we need to do anything with that, then, if we're not, if she's not being declared a nuisance dog. I don't, then, then...
Okay.
So my only, I guess a question to...
Madam Chair?
Yes, Attorney Corbo?
Um, yes, thank you. So, um, what the, the statute says is that if you're not going to make a finding, um, you should dismiss the complaint. So I would recommend that there be a motion to dismiss the complaint as to the dog Luna.
If I may?
Yeah.
So Attorney Corbo, if, if that is the case, can they still require Luna to have an identifying tag and photo so that if there is an issue in the future, that would be clearly identified?
Well, I mean, if you're going to dismiss the complaint or, or not make a finding, then no, you cannot issue an order.
Right, that was my concern.
It would really be up to whether the, the property owner would be will or the dog owner, you know, would be willing to voluntarily provide that information as a, in show of good faith and cooperation.
So is that something we could ask right now?
I'm just concerned that there have been several reports of Luna being loose as well. And, and that is a nuisance. And, and it's, it's of no fault of her own that she gets out and gets loose. But that's, that's... That's where my concern is.
No, that was incorrect reports.
We have several...
Yeah, that's my confusion myself, is...
Right.
Is a report of a young white brown dog loose, um, that was my neighbor's dog.
Excuse me.
Sorry.
And she is pure Weimar honor, so she would, she wouldn't be a brown and white dog.
I'm just con- so, yeah, if she has been proven to be loose, um... She proven to be loose one of the...
She was gra- she was down growling at the tax, so she was loose then.
That's the only one that I can see.
But that, I, that's, right, so definitely she was loose, one loose.
And growling. And the issue being that she has, she's gone a little moroding. And, um, I don't know that I really want to completely dismiss that.
That's fair.
So, Madam Chair?
Yes.
Through you, I, I would wanna point out that, um, whether or not you make a finding as to, as to Luna, um, if, if you choose to, to dismiss the complaint, that does not mean that Luna has carte blanche to go wherever she wants. Um, the, the town has the leash law.
Right.
Um, and the owner is required to keep the dog properly confined to his property. And, um, certainly, you know, if there were a circumstance in the future where, um, only Luna were to escape, um, you know, then that would be a violation of the town's leash law and, um, would be grounds for, you know, reopening this hearing as to that incident. It just wouldn't constitute a violation of the order. Um, so, you know, I don't know if that, how that affects your deliberations, but I just wanted to make it clear that, um, you know, again, it, it, a lack of a finding does not mean that this dog has carte blanche to roam wherever it wants.
Thank you.
Your feelings?
You know, she's hanging around with a bad crowd, but...
Kathy, I'm in agreement with you.
I just...
Yeah.
I, I can't...
Yep.
She's done anything wrong yet.
Yep.
And then get loose once.
Yep.
And when her brothers were getting in a dogfight, she wasn't happy about it.
No, those, those other dogs aren't, won't be doing that. In other words, the bad crowd is going to be confined to the house.
To the property. To the...
To the property, excuse me.
Right, yeah.
Well, truth be told, if it, if the, if the bad dogs get out, she's gonna get out anyway. So there's a violation, and then we can revisit the whole thing.
So do I have a motion to dismiss the violation against Luna?
So moved. I'm...
Second.
Okay, moved by Kathy Bellata, seconded by Ann Harrison, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solacey?
Yeah, I think that's good compromise.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. Okay, so now, uh... What will we, what do we think is a logical approach to addressing dangerous dogs? I don't think euthanizing, myself.
It's not the first step you take.
I'm not prepared.
No, it is not, so...
Um, I agree that it needs to be physical confinement. The electric fence is a good plan B, but it's really not enough, you know, just one power outage and other. Three postings about that on Facebook last week, you know, I've lost power. So it's just not enough for a dangerous dog. I feel it must be physical fenced in area.
Yep.
And when they are not in that area, that they need to be muzzled and on a short leash. I think the recommendations from Chief Fitzgerald were really solid. Um, I also agree 100% with reviewing the installation of the electric fence, 'cause if it's gonna be a plan B, um, you know, making sure it was installed properly and is serving the purpose as it was desired. Um, so I, I agree with the recommendations of, of the chief.
I realize that it's not in the state law, but I would like to recommend professional training.
Yes.
No, I agree with that.
Absolutely. Yep.
That, that, there are dogs who, who have strong aggressive tendencies and will go right through it unless they're properly trained.
Even then?
Even then they may. But my understanding is that the electric fence is to deal with the case where somebody comes to the door, a real estate agent, for example, who has a key or a key box, whatever, and opens the door and the dogs get out.
Mm-hmm.
So it's, it's not...
Right.
It is not to be for them to go out and...
Right.
It's a plan A. Yeah, it'd be, it's a, it's a contingency plan.
Right.
Right? That's how I...
Yeah.
Believed in that.
Yes. Plan A is don't open the front door.
Right.
Use the back fenced-in area. That is where they should be going.
So the intent is that, uh, the front yard is not for unattended roaming, not just an emergency in case they escape. So if you wanna put, if you wanna let the dogs out, you want a full, solid dressing.
Yes, it must be a physical fence that confines the animals when they're outside of the house, period.
All right. But to that end, and I think I brought that up a little earlier, so you've got a professional that's training the dogs with regard to the fence. The expectation is those dogs are never gonna see that fence. I mean, not literally.
Hopefully, right.
But they would never encounter it. Are they gonna remember that two years from now?
The way, the way a dog gets trained to invisible fence, they have a collar and...
I'm aware, but...
As they get close, it beeps. If they go too close, then it will shock them.
Understood. But of course, two years may go by, and they're never getting close to hear that sound.
Yes, good point. Yep.
And that, that's the question I've got.
So you're saying, is that even a valid contingency plan? Because they may lose their dis-... Or, or a disent...
Or, or maybe you need a professional to show up every three months or six months, or a reminder.
Yeah.
Okay? I, I would rely on a professional trainer to say, this is what you have to do to make that fence work as plan B.
But there is no plan A in the front.
Physical fence.
Plan A is the fence.
Plan A is the...
Plan A is the front door.
And the fence, and, and the, and, and the chain link fence.
The chain link fence, I think it's in the back.
Yes. But if you want the dog roaming the front.
No dog roaming.
No, no roaming.
No roaming at all.
Okay, then, then good.
Let's just, let's just go around and confirm what we have. Let's just, let's just go around and confirm what we have. Humanely restrained, meaning a physical fence. If they are leaving the property humanely tethered, and.
Muzzled?
You mentioned muzzled, and, and we're talking just about the boys. Um, although of course, yes, anytime Luna goes out, other than in the back, she should be. Either on a leash or voice command. Provide the police department and the town clerk with a picture and the info, information with the dogs collared. They should always, always be collared, chipped, is that right?
Different colored collars, chip information and picture.
Okay, so different colored collars. For identification purposes, and did you say, are they chipped?
Yes.
All three?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, good, so we'll get the chip information. And then for that the fence and the invisible fence be confirmed by professionals, is that right, chief? And, um, animal control officer tomorrow, as well as professional training to the invisible fence, correct? And that periodic retraining, I don't know how.
You know, I would just say, you, you have to defer to the professionals to say, they have to understand what the fence is going to be used for and that those dogs are not expected to encounter that for long periods of time. You defer to them as to what they need to do, and if reminders are needed.
So do we need to hear back from the professional trainers that Mr. Westerhoff engages, or how does that work?
Do we want, do we hear back, or is that something that animal control and chief can get?
Yeah, they would follow up for you.
Okay.
I think the chief also recommended that during this six month period, there be periodic.
Yes.
Verification of the fence.
Yep.
The physical fence and the.
Be a lesson at the same time.
Okay. Attorney Corbo, is there anything that we are not covering or that we are, which we ought not to?
Uh, no, Madam Chair, it all sounds reasonable to me. I just wanted to make sure that, um, I, I believe at some point you had said that, um, if the dogs are removed from the property, they have to be muzzled and leashed. But it really should be if they are removed from the house or the chain link pen.
Okay.
They have to be muzzled and leashed, and that would include within the front yard area.
Okay. Thank you. Do we need to put into the condition, um, if the dogs do get loose, if any of the conditions are violated, or is that covered under the law?
I, I would suggest, um, Madam Chair, that that be put in the, um, the notice letter to, to the owner so that they are aware of what the consequences are of, um, not abiding by this, this order. But you don't necessarily have to make that part of your vote.
Okay, thank you, um, and we have that wording?
I'll, I'll work with you.
Okay, okay.
Madam Chair, can I just say one thing?
Yes, chief.
Can we just confirm the timeframe for the company to come out and inspect the premises?
Good point. I would say, well, we're entering it, we've got the holidays. Do you have a recommendation?
I'd say within thirty days.
Okay, that this, say it again?
That's generous.
That's very generous.
How about two weeks?
Holidays, I miss it.
Holiday, Christmas, everything, New Year's.
It's mid-January, it's thirty days.
Mid-January, okay, so let's say January fifteenth, okay, by Jan fifteen. Thank you, chief, very good point, okay.
And Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, Madam Chair, I, I would also suggest, um, having a, a deadline, um, for, to report back that the training has been completed.
Thank you. That probably will take a little bit longer. Anybody?
It's a typical training period, I, I don't know.
It, it's typically not long, but, but my understanding with, um, invisible fence, is that they give them a training, then they'll come back in about two weeks.
So is it a six week period?
End of January?
Two months?
I think end of, I think end of January, they usually do the training very quickly. It might be longer because, you know, the boys have had free rein for a while.
I'm going to give them a sustainable goal, so it's want to say two months?
You can, you can say, you know, status report by the, by January thirty first.
I think that's good, status report by January thirty first.
And then it up to, to Hayes and Todd to determine if they need to do a second round by the end of February, something like that.
Does that sound reasonable to you?
Yes.
Okay. So, I guess we need a motion to approve the conditions, is that?
Is this a procedural question?
Yes.
With the, um, extra wording that's going to be put in the notice about the law and the impact of not adhering to the order. If for some reason the owner does not adhere to the order, is the procedure to have another hearing or are the officers empowered to do the next steps? You know, are they empowered to?
We are empowered.
To?
To, to remove the dog, they can impound the dog.
Okay. Which we don't want to have.
So Mad.
I'm sorry, Attorney.
Madam Chair, through you?
Yes, please do.
Madam Chair, through you, uh, I can read for the record what the statute says. This is in chapter one forty, section one fifty seven H. If an owner or keeper of a dog is found in violation of an order, order issued under this section, the dog shall be subject to seizure and empowerment by a law, by a law enforcement or animal control officer. If the keeper of the dog is in violation, all reasonable effort shall be made by the seizing authority to notify the owner of, of the dog of such seizure. Upon receipt of such notice, the owner may file a petition within seven days for return of the dog. The owner or keeper shall be ordered to immediately surrender to the licensing authority the license and tags in the person's possession, if any. And the owner or keeper shall be prohibited from licensing any dog within the Commonwealth for five years. A hearing authority that determines that a dog is dangerous or a nuisance, or that the owner has violated an order under this section shall report such violations to the licensing authority within thirty days. So in, in my opinion, if, um, a police officer or the animal control officer, um, encounters these dogs outside of the enclosure, they may immediately seize them and impound them. If the, the dogs are, um, returned to the property before they can be seized, then we can just discuss what legal process should be followed. But that if you find that there's a violation, um, the, the owner is going to be required to surrender all three of the dogs and will not be allowed to own any dog, um, for a period of five years.
That, that's, thank you, that's kind of what I'm getting at. So a violation of this order, even though Luna is not identified as dangerous, if the other two dogs get loose and the officers pick them up, all three dogs. Are removed from the property.
That's correct.
Just wanted to make that clear.
And, and that, and, and that's in addition to any fines or criminal penalties that may be imposed.
Let's go over the conditions, just to see if there are any that we would not consider to be. Or is that?
So Madam Chair, do you, do you mind if I sort of read this back to you with, um, reference to the wording that, that's in the statute?
Not at all, please do.
Okay, thank you, so, um, from what I understand, and, and someone can, um, make this as a motion if they choose, the following conditions will be imposed. One, that the dog be humanely restrained. Two, that the dog be confined to the premises of the keeper of the dog. Provided however, that confined shall mean securely confined indoors or confined outdoors in a securely enclosed and locked pen. In this case, the chain link enclosure in the back of the house. Two, uh, I'm sorry, three, that when removed from the premises of the owner or the, um, house or chain link fence, the dog shall be securely and humanely muzzled and restrained with a chain or other tethering device having a minimum tensile strength of three hundred pounds and not exceeding three feet in length. Four, that the owner or keeper of the dog provide to the licensing authority or animal control officer information by which the dogs may be identified throughout their lifetime, including photographs, colored collars and microchip identification. And finally, that, um, both the chain link fence be inspected and confirmed to be in working order by a trainer and the animal control officer by January fifteenth. And that the dogs undergo professional training, um, on the invisible fence with a status report on the training by January thirty first and completion of the training by February twenty eighth and retraining as determined necessary, um, by the trainer. And finally, that both the chain link fence and the, um, invisible fence be inspected and confirmed to be in working order every six months.
Is that?
I hope somebody's better at taking vacation than I am.
He is.
Luckily we got it on tape too.
So, do I have?
So if everyone's in agreement, someone can say so moved.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, move by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solissey, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solissey?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata? Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. May I have a motion to close the hearing, the dog hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Move by John Round, seconded by Ann Harrison, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solissey?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes.
Thank you.
Western Hoff, we know this is not easy. And your dogs have had a grand time, so now it's keeping around a long time, but in the fenced in yard or in the house.
I totally agree with your judgment on the, on the dog, on the boys, but not on my girl.
Well, no, your girl's not a nuisance, so.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
Happy holidays. Thank you. Okay, um, up, Mr. Corbo, thank you very much, Chief Fitzgerald, and animal control officer tomorrow, thank you.
You're welcome, thank you so much.
And I hope I didn't hurt your name too much.
Good moral, it's okay.
Good moral, thank you.
Long as it's spelled right of the check.
All right, exactly, happy holidays. All right, um, do we have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, move by John Round, seconded by Ann Harrison, John Round?
Yes.
Brian Solissey?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, thank you everybody for attending, happy holidays. And we'll see you back here January thirty.